Hi, I'm Mark. So everyone who could be here, Will Stoll, Frank Arnold, Andy Franklin, Carla Medichas.
Here.
Then everybody who is here and Ben May. Should we stand for the presentation? All right, well, I'm going to be back in the States in America. It's really popular for those who stay there. What about nation under that? Consider the goals for people to be able to keep in the US for all. Thank you. So now anyone who didn't have that. Um, Washington, Texas, Virginia, and Central. Agent is groomed, moving on to public comments. Um, I don't have a list, but if you are here to speak on a knowledge of. So hi, Riz, ideally, I meant fortunes. I'm good, how you guys doing? Hi, Riz, I'm Michelle. I guess. Do you guys think this is a combination? Ben, you're right. Shawan, you're a young folks, we're just about to get a business. And when he was little school, he'd thunder, there is a hook, check left, right, with introduction. They're really glad. They are folks in directions. Some people along, uh, really approach an intervention. So lovely, very nice. We are, you know, the end man. We've been watching and attending our district board meeting, such as. And the father, we were excited about the. He's not too great, our district election, you know, yes, we're also excited about the research. We've got like some other living in that. Then when the jury board is here, we're surprised. We will have one big one, a future. We stand, we stand in this feeling for over a month. And then we decided we didn't get to cheat our mindset from waiting for it to take. So we bring some ideas about what we could do with our schools right now. And decided that what we want, what we want. Then decide that we want to remind everyone how about all that we should so well. I can write different more than that. Other work that still needs to be done to continue. And the lessons we're going to learn, some of the teaching will change later package here. Um, so we get this plan drawn up here in the same covered to love for the mission teachers. We have learning skills and teacher work and they're like, so. We need to be honest, started our practice. Christian Rogers was trying to continue to running that perfect right in the relationship, relationships. The story recently. This is added social emotional bearing, the person that wants to come to the student. They were done improving and learning by just. And anybody who's having the middle school, we were coaching and integrating. In addition, this is what he's been changing. Their children should stay in. Considering this, we may also consider. So today, they increase the operating of the actual activities and programming to help to continue the work that's into that school. We're currently offering 25, 25, 22, 22, 23. They changed last month to be the interest on these students, which is deep education. Just that, like, I go for my children. And now for the new bigger students, you choose that. That summer, registered, we're in pressure that we can use. There's a pressure that we change. We focus on being substance, we can get ready for the data with that. That's right, the head of events, the history, the aging, the personal, and sometimes even like the. While we focus on our schools. They will allow us to continue to change. So obviously, we're trying to open in two years, construction of our city town. Their goal is to start a group of students in 2000. But we don't believe in this, the idea to. And the advances that are in students, the agents, and that's. Our neighboring districts are awesome, and it's. They sign up, it's done, I know, read a school, I read this journal. And if there's a way to go. Reaching to us, our schools, to find for the individual. That's the reason that our students, they have. So one of our goals, we're making change, we're about to build some things in our schools. Our other goal is to show our students to compete and achieve an education. Did you saw we want to encourage?
Speak real close if you can.
You like a rock star. One of our goals in talking here today is we want to basically play our students. Our other goal is to research the district and change in education. To use, we want to encourage some other actions from that world and our families and our folks. Pressing the march of speed and focus, and then mentioning the shoes and the way positive. We're asking families to share their experiences and certainly the nature, sometimes to sleep together. And we ask our coworkers to join us in providing. Not within our schools. We put together our shares and us, that's all I did, very technical, just the end of the time. And we really are to. Like we said, we were, we were saying, just to see all that was happening and wanted to continue to go forward and.
I'll add, I know that you guys met when Miss Young and Miss Weiss to discuss. And I think we were enthusiastic about the prospect and then we met this morning to sort of talk about it. More than it's relative and to sort of think about this as a teacher, my effort, as much as I was hesitant, let me know to say, hey, you guys should do more. That's not, it's not, doesn't feel great, but I love that, okay, just keep it going now. It motivates you and it's something to. unite you guys, I also said to you that about months ago before budget surprise. Um, we were talking about and doing the strategic plan, talking about. We're the ones who need to tell our story, we're the ones who. It is amazing about what we know. And so I also wanted to give you about, as I'm kind of covering, keep focusing about that through our meetings and. Keep in touch with actually, or attach it to our schedule planning. You know, touching base on that every meeting, touching base on communications every meeting, so thinking about that. So I'm just really glad we brought this to the forefront and for us to consider it. Could you talk about some of the things you've thought about, like some of the examples here? A flyer that you came up with that might be something that I'll be. You know, I mean, so.
Um, so. We were thinking that one issue, so I can start investing. It's always something that our families and. And you're just getting, so we're getting. That's going to be just one side of things, and I just want to ask you to join places where they can use a practice. And it's very strong, but I've seen, um, especially in the next several weeks. But also, yeah, um, some of us are really considering, um, our son's. And so I'm getting signed on to a good problem. It's relatively, this is for our next year, we just. If I, um, I would stack to meet with us. Ready, ready to agree to them again. We just, I feel like we have a lot of issues that's.
Some cohesive messaging ideas, things that are sustainable, but you know. Stick and this idea that budget is not, is not, our budget situation is not going to be helped out, out of that, it is, but. What we are facing is what all public schools and students are facing, so we create a conversation about that. And making sure that that message is live every time we're talking about our budget. So that it doesn't become a state that happened to us, it's a state that happened to public schools. And we're, thanks for that, that was kind of our main, you know, this type of thing. So I mean, look at the expansion, what we're going through right now, short term, we're teaching long term, growing. We also, I think, I, we're really using. Different districts spend away and helping set up a status, sending it down as to what makes us. Many institutions.
Thank you. I love hearing these ideas from our teachers now. For those of you who've been around long enough, you remember the parent engagement network was doing a lot of this work. And you were always begging for teacher participation as we sold signs and tried. Raising concerns about spreading a positive message in our district, celebrating everything we're doing well. And it's really hard for me to feel as volunteers because we age out. And you don't age out as long as you stick with us. So I just, I'm very excited to see you here, um, preparing to celebrate. Message and have all that journey. I would love to see, um, families, caregivers participating. I love the idea of this teacher-like committee. I would love even more if families were invited to participate because we really are a community. Community that can participate together in this and families I'm here and feel just like you. Like, we're all sitting here, us five, we're stuck in the mud, trying to push through this to make sure we keep going. I know it can feel like we're going very negative, but we're present, we know this is important. So I just want to thank you for reminding us, reminding us about.
Sounds like Mr. Compton, too. I also need to get most of my.
Carla's the only one that was audible at all, so speak as loud as Carla did.
Like a rock star, right? Right, so truly the fact that you guys got together and drove this at a time of this stress level was quite high. And understandably, but it's on your shoulders and in your hearts, it's extraordinary. So it's, it's fabulous, and I think it's a really exciting case to start. And, you know, the best thing that we can do is plant these seeds and continue to nurture them. Because you're right, there's a variety of reasons that we are very, very proud and invested in our schools. And those days are hard, but we can contribute of course. Especially people we have, people who are that, that's like, you're a friend, like, so thank you very much.
My, my ask would be that you keep coming back. Or the teacher, that would be a, who wants to talk about how we can support communication efforts and what that might be like. Is that, you know, yard signs, is that this messaging, is that, you know, whatever that was like, like keep bringing us those ideas and accounts that we can support. Is there anyone else who would like to, uh, take a public comment on Yaga Jetta? Okay, we are going to move on to item three A, mode information, and we have ten for bear fair. We give them the overview and plan this color.
Excellent, um, hope. I appreciate you accommodating my schedule and thanks for working through the technology pieces here. This evening, I think, as Kim had mentioned, we had wanted to kind of take you to the next step. Through addressing some of the budget concerns and so. Next slide, please. My goal tonight is to walk you through some of the funding options for the operational deficit. To discuss a timeline and then to discuss some rating considerations. Ideally, what I'd like to do is go through the next six slides and then take a quick break. And you're welcome to ask me questions, but I think it would be helpful to get through the next six slides in succession. So that we've got some continuity to the conversation. So next slide, please. So clearly, you've been working hard to. Address and solve some of the deficit. Budget issues that you've got in front of you and you've considered some operational solutions already. I know that you've been working with people to consider options for looking at the annual budget to reduce expenses. And you're also, you know, in the early stages of discussing what operational needs look like next year. And whether or not it's necessary to go to operational referendum. And I think those are two important steps. The other avenue that many districts would look to would be fund balance to, you know, kind of bridge that gap. I think, you know, given what we know about the current status of the budget, fund balance really isn't an option for us. And in fact, we probably would want to consider some. Solutions for restoring some fund balance, so. Working through that, one of the options and probably our best option at this point in the budget cycle. Would be to consider a non-referendum borrowing or to put it into DPI terms, a fund thirty eight borrowing. The reason that a fund thirty eight borrowing is unique is that it can be done without referendum. The reason it can be done without referendum is because the payments are required to be made inside the revenue limit. So it has a budget impact, not a levy impact. So for example, you could go and borrow, the state gives you authority up to a million dollars just as a board. To go out and borrow a million dollars, up to a million dollars with that authority. Without any tacit voter approval. But again, that payment needs to be inside your revenue limit. They do allow for a path if you need more than a million. And I think our solution is probably in the range of something between three, you know, to four and a half million dollars. And in that situation, you can still access a fund thirty eight borrowing. But there is a petition process required, so you would have to wait out a thirty day petition period. After acting on a resolution to borrow that money, but the payments would still have to be with inside your revenue limit. So, you know, it wouldn't necessarily solve a, a future budget issue. But it does provide resources at least to bridge that gap. Next page, please. So I, I reference fund balance and you know, this chart is basically your historical fund balance going back to two thousand eighteen. With a projection in two thousand twenty three, twenty four, based on the unaudited financials that we had. I believe as of. Early February, mid February, plus what was the past adopted budget. And based on that, I think, you know, it, we've discussed it before, but we're probably in a situation, all things being equal, if nothing changed. Where we would be looking at potentially negative fund balance. And that's not a situation, obviously, that you would like to be in. And so I know the current business team has been updating the current budget. And been projecting, not only, you know, working through year end to make sure that we're starting with that building block. In the corner that is the proper information, but also reviewing cash flow and reviewing the future budget to come to some conclusion. So I think to add to that, to the solution. What we're here to discuss tonight is potentially a fund thirty eight borrowing that could replenish fund balance. So that would be one purpose for it, so that, you know, you could borrow to build that fund balance back up. But also, if you're considering an operational referendum, we have a challenge with timing. Because we're in a current budget, meaning that you've started a budget at the end of June. That we're working in, and if you had a referendum and it was successful, we wouldn't receive money. For that referendum until roughly January of two thousand twenty five, so. You have the option of reducing the current budget that you're in to meet, you know, to, to balance it. Or if that pathway is too severe, you could also consider borrowing a little bit of fun thirty eight dollars to, you know. Kind of bridge between the middle of this budget until you know the answer in November. Early December in terms of what the balance of the fiscal year looks like. So you could borrow for both of those things. So that's borrowing for. Project or borrowing for operational costs to, you know, fill that void of operational need. Next slide, please. So fund balance often gets confused with cash flow. So fund balance is the amount of money if the, if the school year were to stop at the end of your fiscal year. And on June thirtieth. You would look at your audit and you would see what the school district has set aside as fund balance. In the. At, at that point in time, but it would also separate in a different portion of that balance sheet. What you have available for cash and cash and fund cash is really like where you're at at any point in time of the year. And it's kind of like your checking account balance as opposed to that point in time at the end of the year. Where you look at what the district has in unspent reserves or uncommitted reserves. So cash flow is another piece of the puzzle that we want to keep an eye on as we discuss what your needs are. So school districts, as was discussed last meeting, receive their revenues in very blocky segments throughout the school year. You receive most of your, your revenue in the form of tax receipts, which come in in January, February, a little bit in April, and then in August. I mean, you also receive other funds, you know, kind of sporadically throughout the year. However, you make your expenditures really kind of evenly throughout the school year. And so there are points in time where you rely on either fund balance. Or timing to bridge those gaps. And if you need to, many school districts borrow on a short-term basis for cash flow purposes. You did that last year, you borrowed five and a half million dollars. In September of two thousand twenty three, and that money was available to you to bridge the gaps while you were waiting for revenues to come in. So that there was no interruption in your expenditures. When you do that, there's an expectation that at some point in time. If the, if the next school year didn't start, you would be in a position where you could pay that fund, that cash flow borrowing off. And so if you look at this chart that I've pulled together here, you'll see that we've charted, you know, roughly an estimate. And this is an estimate based on what we know of the, of the current budget, an estimate of where your expenditures are coming in, in pink. Compared to what that revenue receipt looks like. And we know based on what you have in the bank at the beginning of July, you know, roughly what that would look like if we projected out through the end of the year. So you're relying on some of your cash flow funding, that interim funding to bridge gaps when you might be short. For example, in December of the school year, it's a common time when school districts get short on cash, you relied on it then. That borrowing is broken into two components. One component needs to be paid back in April, and I have a little line in April that shows what the ending balance. In cash in the bank for the school would be based on what we know, that would be roughly a million four thirty five after you paid back. Two point seven million of that cash flow borrowing when it comes due. You also have a balance of that due in August. And you'll notice there in August, based on what we know, we would likely see a deficit at that point in time if we didn't cash flow borrow again. But that's not the position that you want to be in. So I think if we're considering a fund thirty eight borrowing to restore fund balance, we would want to do it before that August date. We would want to be in a position, in my opinion, to do it heading into July, just to give you some flexibility and some comfort. So next slide, please. So I wanted to explain briefly the difference between cash flow borrowing and fund thirty eight borrowing. Because they both impact your operational budget, but in different ways, and they're used for different purposes. And I think it's really important to separate the two. So cash flow borrowing, many school districts do that and they rely on that as a tool to bridge the temporary gaps in a school year. When you're waiting for revenues to meet expenditures. The security pledge or the pledge that you give to the investor. When they lend you that money for that one year period of time. Is that you're pledging the tax and revenue receipts that you have for the school year. And they feel comfortable lending you that money because they feel comfortable knowing that at the end of the year. You're going to have funds available to pay that cash flow back. So it's really meant as a tool to manage your cash needs throughout the year. It doesn't change your fund balance or your cash position in any way. It just, or not your cash position, it doesn't change your financial position dramatically. Because you're, you're pledging the revenues that you've budgeted that you're going to receive at the end of the year. It's kind of a, you know, a neutral pledge. As opposed to fund thirty eight, fund thirty eight is a long-term borrowing. So it's actually restorative, you're borrowing money to add back to your either fund balance or for operational needs. And you're going to pay that loan back over future years. So you're borrowing in the future. Or you're borrowing over the future, paying back over the future for needs that are present needs. So in this case, the purpose would be for operating expenses or to restore fund balance. And the security pledge, what you offer back as your source of repayment is an annual tax levy. So in subsequent bunch of budgets, you would levy the payments that are needed to pay back that loan. And as I discussed earlier, because it's fund thirty eight, it doesn't give you new revenue resources. In future budgets, you would have to find a way to fit that into your budget. Next slide, please. So in thinking about this and considering your timeline and considering a lot of different factors. My suggestion would be for the school district to consider working with the state trust fund for that fund thirty eight borrowing. So what is the state trust fund? The state trust fund loan program is a loan program that's administered by the Board of Commissioners Public Lands in Wisconsin. It's a trust that manages public lands throughout the state. And then they use those resources to lend money to municipalities. And as those repayments are coming in, any money that they make as their enterprise, state enterprise goes to fund public libraries. But their primary focus of the state trust fund loan program is to help municipalities with lending. They lend money for special projects. And I did talk with them about this project, and this is a project that, you know, a borrowing that they could assist with. Again, I mentioned that payments are made within the revenue limit. Borrowings of this sort for tax purposes, for federal tax purposes are considered, they're considered to be taxable as it's, as opposed to tax exempt. So when you borrow, for example, for a facilities project in the school district, that would qualify for a tax exempt status because it's a public purpose. The federal government considers these borrowings to be taxable because they ultimately benefit people outside of the district. And it's not specifically just for a public thing. And so the state trust fund loan program, that rate is at six percent, and that's considered a taxable rate. They don't distinguish between tax exempt and taxable rates for the purposes of lending. They just have one rate for borrowers, so that's a very good rate for a taxable loan. And it's also a very simple application process. The district has roughly four months, once you go through the application process to draw on those funds. So you could estimate a need that is, you know, slightly high. And then have some time to really, you know, adjust to that need before you draw on the funds. It also has a very flexible repayment provisions, so you can basically prepay annually. It also has very flexible repayment provisions, so you can basically prepay annually without any. Prepayment penalty, which I think, you know, would be very helpful given the type of loan that it is. I would say the only thing that's a little bit challenging about it. We could have interest only in the first year, so it wouldn't have a tremendous budget impact next year. But beyond that, it would be, you would have to pay back principal and interest on an equal basis. So it doesn't have a lot of flexibility with regard to structuring. And we mentioned there's a class one notice and a petition, thirty-day petition period required in order to authorize it. So last slide with regard to this borrowing, if you don't mind, next slide. So here is an example of what that loan would look like if it was a four million dollar loan borrowed at six percent. With no interest or no principal in the first year, only interest in two thousand twenty-five. And then annual principal and interest payments thereafter. You can see that that amount would be interest only in the first year, two thousand twenty-five would be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then roughly five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the next nine years thereafter. There is some flexibility in terms of how long you finance that. It could be shorter, it could be slightly longer, we'd have to work through those details with the state, but I wanted to give you that as an example. I know that was a question that came up the last time I was before the board. So with that, I'm sure you have a lot of questions. I want to pause before doing the next two segments and entertain any questions you might have. Thanks.
You might have to. You might have to mute yourself and then once Kevin responds.
Yeah, I'm having difficulty hearing you if you're asking a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's turn this off, let's try that. And I put my, this is the. Okay, couple of quick questions for you. First of all, and then I'll go back and figure out her done that for each question. You mentioned the dollar amounts. I move it to one million dollar cap, but it's a state trust fund. Are those two different types of loans? How do you get to, you know, the four million dollars that you had?
Sure.
One million dollars and four million dollars. And a quick follow-up on that is, I add some state trust fund, it means it's a subject to build a fund in the state trust fund.
Sure, thank you. And I, I think I understood your question. So. Fund thirty-eight is, you know, a special type of borrowing that the state statutes allow. So it's a borrowing where the payments have to be done within, inside the revenue limit. So the state recognizes that school districts may need to borrow for certain needs. They've offered that tool, a fund thirty-eight borrowing, but it doesn't come with additional revenue limit authority. So they have one very simple way to get up to one million dollars for school districts. It's like a special statutory reference. Where you can, as just simple board action, approve a million dollar loan, up to a million. You can't have that authority outstanding for other loans. You'd have to net out whatever you have outstanding under that million dollar free exemption. But you could borrow up to an aggregate of a million dollars with simple board approval. Caveat is, is that the payments have to be, you know, made in subsequent years inside the revenue limit. You don't get new revenue limit authority. However, I don't think that a million dollars, if a million dollars was sufficient to meet your need, that would be a path forward. I don't think a million dollars is going to be sufficient to meet the need that we're talking about. I'm guessing, and this is, you know, again, we're going to need input from Todd and Gus in terms of, you know, where you're at with the budget. And some board input in terms of building, you know, the right budget for the remainder of this year. Plus restoring some fund balance. I'm guessing that that, just to use a number, I'm guessing that that number is somewhere between. Two and a half and four and a half million dollars. So I gave you a four and a half or a four million dollar example. Either way, it's more than that million dollars free authority. So if you're not using the million dollar free authority, there's still a path forward for a fund thirty-eight loan. However, that path forward requires you to wait out a thirty-day petition period after you, as a board, approve that loan. Assuming that there's not, I believe it's twenty percent of voters in the last gubernatorial election. Sign a petition going to referendum. If you've not been petitioned to go to referendum, you have the authority to borrow that money. But you don't get new revenue limit authority, those payments still have to be made within your existing budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so to go to, so either way, fund thirty-eight goes with state trust fund loan. But we ask for more money in the petition process than we go about that one note that we expect.
Yeah, you could ask for more than four million, and it wouldn't necessarily have to come from the state trust fund. You could go to a local bank, for example, just to use an example as another funding source. However, I think the state trust fund, given their unique nature. And the fact that this is a taxable loan, and they're kind of ambivalent about the tax status of the loan, offers the best. Vehicle for you to access a fund thirty-eight loan. It's the best source of funding.
Can you turn your? Can you turn your mic on on your?
First off, when we talk about tax alone, I just want to make sure that I understand that. We are the entity that's going to pay that federal tax on that. And then we, when you talk about even from the revenue limit, I guess the other part of this is I'm going to turn that. If we are a typical school that raises the revenue to the limit of our authority. And we have already done that. How do we get a one thirty-eight loan and pay it off in context of that budget at least? And I mean, I think you have some ideas here, but I just want to comment on that.
Sure.
If we. Get that loan in July, and that is, and we have the income of revenue limit, but our budget's already. Passed for the year, and we've already matched out our budget.
No, and that's a great question. So. Two parts, the taxable status, so. It's, if this were a municipal bond, if you were going out to issue this to the general public. The buyer of this loan would not be able to take a tax exemption on the interest that they receive from you for owning that bond. It would be considered taxable. You wouldn't have the tax-exempt status for this project or for this loan. So. You're not paying, you would pay a higher interest rate because of the taxable status, because it didn't qualify for tax-exempt status. But that's, if the state trust fund is the investor or the owner of the loan. They don't pay taxes, so they're ambivalent as to whether or not it's taxable or tax-exempt. So you kind of get their tax-exempt rate for a taxable project. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But then the other part of that though is that if we're taking borrowing that has to be paid within our revenue limit.
Yep. Yeah, that's the more important question. And so you would be borrowing this year in this current budget. Sorry. Yep. You, you would be borrowing this year in this current budget. And paying back, that first payment would be in next year's budget. So you would either have to have new resources through a additional resources from a operational referendum. To ease the budget. Or you would have to cut from your current budget enough to, or your next budget enough to accommodate those payments.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so I guess my first question is, I was looking back at the five and a half million. Borrowing you did in August. Is that, is that a multi-borrowing five and a half million in August?
Yeah, it's not uncommon. That's roughly around the time that school districts, they borrow, most school districts borrow sometime between August and October. The state or the federal government requires you to have adopted a budget before you can cash flow borrow. So the annual cash flow borrowings usually occur right after your annual budget is approved. And I think that that was roughly in line with where you were borrowing last year. So I don't think it was, you know, dramatically out of line with what you had been doing in the past.
Okay, and then it looks like we're supposed to make seven million in April and August. So there was no interest on that borrow?
No, there is interest on those borrowings. In fact, at the footnote of the bottom of the page that they're referenced. The interest, I believe, is referenced on both of those. And so, you know, those, the repayments of those loans are factored into the cash flow projection. Because they need to be paid out of the current budget. And that's why I'm recognizing that. Heading into August, when this, the second half of that five and a half million dollar loan is due. We would want to have resources in the bank to make that payment. Otherwise, I think we'd be in a very difficult cash position.
Okay, yeah, I don't see that interest.
It was less than that. It was, yeah, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I thought it was referenced in. No, I'm sorry, I didn't include that interest cost. I can email that to you afterwards.
Okay, so basically, when we're, so this is one of the one, this is the case where this doesn't increase our revenue limit. So essentially. The money can, and it's not exact, essentially the amount of money that you spend on a school for the. Next year, when you do the levy, and I guess that would be in January, if you said we also get some of the levy maybe April and August. If that would be the revenue limit less this five point five million. And that's the amount we have left for the following school. Except for the fact that you're suggesting now that we borrow again. So that would be that cash flow, right, so we're kind of borrowing, borrowing to pay off the previous borrowing.
Right, the fund thirty-eight loan is actually to restore fund balance and to pay project costs. So it's, it's not like the cash flow borrowing, the cash flow borrowing is different. You'll probably still need cash flow borrowing next year to weather, you know, the, the temporary changes or. Differences between when you receive cash and when you have expenses. That's different than a fund thirty-eight loan. The fund thirty-eight loan is, you're borrowing, let's just say it's four million dollars. You're borrowing to put, to bring your fund balance. Positive. And you're borrowing potentially to meet. The payroll that you've committed to in the current budget.
So basically, we're probably going to have to do this fund thirty-eight borrow.
You would want the money in, in the bank before August. I'm suggesting that you would want the money available to you in June or July. Fund thirty-eight, correct.
You're gonna have to do cash flow borrowing sometime in August.
Right.
And then.
And I do, I do apologize, I have a hard stop at six o'clock. I have a meeting that I'm going to at six, that I have to. Walk to at six.
I'm just wondering, so it looks like the second column on the seventh page, I think it is. Second column, that's the interest repayment. So a hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred seven, it's, I think, six percent of, I think, three million. So I see where you got two hundred forty thousand, because that's six percent of four million, but where does a hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred?
Yeah, so the state has very specific payment dates. They have, they require repayments on March fifteenth of each year. So I was assuming that you would borrow on June fifteenth and pay it back on March fifteenth. Have that first interest payment on March fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five. So it's not a full year's worth of interest.
So then we would do. Four million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred seven minus the hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred seven. Why the second year was updated and it was two hundred four thousand?
No, so the second year would represent, you know, we hadn't paid any principal off in two thousand twenty-five. So in the second year, it's basically, you know, a full year of interest at four million dollars until March fifteenth.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's, it sounds like you're suggesting a four million dollar loan?
No, what I'm suggesting is that, and that's on my, the timeline moving forward. What I'm suggesting is that the board continue to work really, you know, closely. With the business partners, Todd and Gus. To determine, you know, what is a satisfactory budget, knowing what you know now into the end of the year.
Okay, yeah.
And get a really good understanding.
Going rate is for bank loans?
I, offhand, I, I know that six percent for a ten-year loan is very competitive for a taxable borrowing right now.
Okay, so that was my other question. Typical term for that, a fund thirty-eight loan is ten years.
So under present state law, you would have to do this as a note, and the state trust fund would limit it to ten years. And most of those loans, given just kind of the state, current state statutes would limit them to ten years. There is some legislation that may be signed in April that could extend that out to twenty. But I think, you know, all of those details can be determined between now and the end of March, beginning of April. I think what's important is that we know that fund thirty-eight is probably a big portion, a big piece of the puzzle. We now need to determine what it looks like, who the lender is, I'm suggesting the state. How much and for what term? And you know, those are the details that can follow.
No, good, a grass question. On the fund balance and cash flow chart, the revenues and expenses?
Yeah.
Just to make sure I understand, if I hypothetically, if I add up each of those points on the revenues between July and July. I would end up with a number that roughly equals our total revenues for the year, right?
Yep.
Okay.
In theory, but you know, the way the cash flow works is that, you know. People don't pay, you know, you're, some of your. Bills for July are paid in August and September. Or for June are paid, you know, slightly after the school year. That's why there's a difference between fund balance and cash. Because, you know, the school year, last year's school year doesn't absolutely end on June thirtieth. But in theory, yes, they should be very close to the budget that you passed, revenues and expenses.
Okay, I know, I have to go quick. Can you use an operational referendum that should be paid fund thirty-eight debt?
Like, yes. Yes.
You could repay it sooner than the ten years?
Yes, and that's why I think that the flexible call provisions of the state are also very, should be, would be very attractive in your situation.
Does anybody know we have current fund thirty-eight debt?
You have a little bit of fund thirty-eight debt outstanding. What debt you have outstanding is fund thirty-eight, I believe.
Thank you, Kevin, for your time.
Sure, if you don't, so I think. I've included a timetable for the state trust fund loan on page nine. I've included a a timetable for the state trust fund loan on page nine. I think what's important here is that um. We can start the application process. And I think that that's important to do because I don't, what I would hate to have happen, we know that you're going to need money in uh, the summer. And we need a at least thirty to forty five days for that petition period process. So I would really, you know, I I think it's in the district's best interest to kind of get to an answer on this. In early April, in terms of what that need is, so that you can start the process. And then the next slide, um, I included some other important milestones because I think it's important for you just to keep. Oh, I'm sorry, um, is there, go back one?
Okay, one second.
Okay, that's okay. Uh, um, there were some other upcoming milestones that I wanted you just to to be aware of. Yeah, I think, you know, updating the current budget and uh, getting a better handle on what your forecast for future needs are. That's going to go hand in hand with any conversations you're having about operational uh, referendum in the future. So I think those conversations dovetail really closely with what we're doing here. Um, and then the last slide, I just wanted to um, mention that fund balance, uh, the the uh, take, take us back one slide, please.
Back one slide, sorry, sorry.
That's right. Um, fund balance um, is critical to your bond rating. And so, you know, I think we're going to need to communicate um, what's happening with the fund thirty eight loan and your current budget. To uh, standard emporers, which is who her holds your current bond rating. Um, as soon as I think we have a pathway forward, I think we should proactively get in front of um. The rating agency to have that conversation. Um, so fund balance is important. It fits into, uh, if you look at the next slide. Into the four quadrants of the bond rating. Um, they're going to look at your debt position, your finances, your. Local economy and tax base and the management of the school district and all those pieces fit together. Um, and they're going to probably reevaluate the bond rating. And so I think it's important that we communicate with them about that. Um, next slide, please. The reason that rating is important, and this was a question that came up before, you're presently rated double A. Um, I'm guessing we'll probably see uh, a rating downgrade one or two notches uh, at least. Um, and for each notch down, you're likely going to, if you were to borrow long term. Um, for a project and your rating was uh, reduced by or increased by. Uh, a gradation, you're probably going to pay five to ten basis points. Uh, difference based on rating for each grade of rating. And so just to give you some perspective on that, um, a. Five to ten percent reduction uh, in um. Or notch, a notch decrease in your bond rating would represent a roughly five to ten percent decrease. In uh, interest cost on a twenty year borrowing. So the difference between five percent and four ninety five, four point nine five percent. And on a twenty year, ten million dollar borrowing with level debt service, that would equate to between sixty and a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of. Interest cost, additional interest cost on that borrowing. So I just wanted to point that out. I know that was a question that came up before. So uh, really quickly, I could answer some, uh, uh, one additional question before six, if anyone has one. Uh, one more time, please.
I do, I'm sorry, I do the one question, this is hard. Um, with regards to the bond rating, is there any other action that we can take that would favor being favorable perceived by standard in force? I know that I always would hope, but if anything else, I'm seeing that the majority of districts is basically at minus eighty.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, you know, to, um, I think. Develop a plan over the next few weeks. And communicate, proactively communicate the plan to them. I think that would be the best thing that we could, that we could do. Um, and just recognizing, you know, some of the steps that we're taking to uh, alleviate the financial challenge. Well, thank you so much. I'm uh, certainly feel free to forward any additional questions that you might have. I'm sure you're going to have some as you digest some of this information. Um, thanks for accommodating my schedule and I look forward to continued dialogue as we kind of work towards a a solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Before before we move on, I just wanna see if anybody has questions for our M two here. Um, March four meeting, so this is looking in a couple of weeks. You guys were, are anticipating coming the next day, but it's the month of tomorrow.
Right, and and I mean, we'll we'll provide cash flow information to. Uh, very focused and will confirm what what that should be. And and I think. You know, just off the one I'm seeing, quite a four million probably.
And okay, so when you bring it, it would be helpful for me to understand, hopefully, well, how it fits into the context of the larger budget. That you're creating, so like, it's four million, how much has their fund balance and how much needs to go to operations, how does that, I think, the. Cash flow would probably also borrow, so I guess, just understanding, I don't know, how it'll be important. Okay, um, now, Gary with a more complex question. Okay, so I'll ask him. What I heard Kevin suggesting is that this is. This uh, fund thirty eight loan through the land trust would operate like a line credit?
No, no.
You would only draw the amount.
Yeah, uh, the way you do a lot of creditors, if it's for a uh, less than twelve. I mean, you, you can draw from this at different times. I mean, yeah, it probably does that.
I guess, I I mean, in terms of, if you start paying interest, I need to draw, right?
Correct, yeah. So you set up a loan that is full of funds, and I use my own, not being the type of. Very flexible, um, that taxable rate is actually pretty good, um. And it's, you know. I'd also like that too on the on the bond rating. They look at other things too. Number one, you have a pretty good, steady uh, number. And that that goes into that reading report card. So there's some things here that we'll go into that report card that um, will will probably. Feel good, um, I I see your your your. Your property values, your assets, all types of things, so those go into it. And then, if if nothing else. You can always buy a credit rating by, you can get, let's call it five fifty, insurance. And it's that, and well, no, it's not, it's it's actually not very expensive, especially if you already have a pretty good rating. But you have to decide if if the the cost of that, um. You 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 gain by having a much lower interest rate. I, again, I've used that in in past districts as well, uh, when we were, uh, one district was, uh. Here's A A plus or what I what, uh, where it was at, but it was one of those that mostly the the districts are in it. Um, the bond premium, it was cost effective at getting them.
So it's like paying a point.
Yeah.
The whole winner analogy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Part of our life, when you, when you get, when you get mortgage and insurance. Um, to buy a house, you see those, you know, they'll give you a better rates, so that type of thing, but um. You don't have, you don't have to get it, uh, but if 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 the cost of that is less. Drops interest rate, where it saves you money, then it makes sense to do it. And again, uh, bear will figure all that stuff out.
I have a question, can you hear me? So with regards to the the state fund, if we were to apply for a four million dollar loan. Is there a reason that we would not draw four million dollars?
Sure, I mean, right away.
Well, kind of, we're just wondering, like, if they allocate four million dollars for us, it's earmarked for us, but if we don't ever draw the whole thing out, are we paying interest on the whole thing the entire time? Or do we only pay interest in portions of the total we use?
Typically, you only pay on what you are actually have drawn, but um. At what, at some point, they may say, well, you know, we've set this aside for you, so. But you can, if if you don't need it, you can pay it off early too. That's the other advantage of this. A lot of other types of uh. Long term loans have minimum two year uh, waiting time before you can pay it off. So it's, it's advantageous there.
So the table he showed us, assuming that we drew four million all at once.
Well, you'll need it, I I mean, based on what the the figures are, by the end of August, with with that other, uh, with that short term. Uh, borrowing is doing that, you probably will need it all, unless we, you know, as we dig through the numbers, we we. Find a a need for a lower amount. And and the the point is, I mean, I'm telling you to be cautious, you know, if it's close to a little. Higher, because there's always contingencies, there's always things that you're just not aware of. And yeah, I said, it's it's safer to go in that direction, uh, and and because you can pay it off. If you don't need it. Um, you just need to pay it off. Thank you.
So that's the only action coming out of this. We're gonna wait for a recommendation. That's gonna come to us before the next part of it, right? Yeah, when when do you anticipate making a recommendation?
Well, I'm, I don't, I mean, it, uh, uh, again. I'm gonna leave the recommendation on the borrowing amount too bare, but I am hoping to have. The rest of the numbers for cash flow by Thursday to them. I've got like ninety two percent of those numbers based on. Actual year to date and the forecasted through June thirtieth. Um, I want to finish up some of the other accounts. Uh, once they have that, then they can forecast the July. And and August and September costs, but basically just by using actuals, um. Any, you know, we're also working on other reductions and so on, but those probably will take place until the fall of the year, so. They're the ones looking at cash flow through uh, July, autumn, September, and then from that, they'll they'll say this is what we do.
Can I just get clarification? Because I feel as though he just told us that he would rely on information from you guys, and I just, I just, okay, so.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna get the, you know, what we believe are the the, what the real budget should look like. As of June thirty of two thousand twenty four, uh, the the twenty three, twenty four budget, with some contingencies built in. And then they're gonna use that to do the the cash flow forecasting.
I'd be visiting a a panel handoff during a, during a long race, right? So you guys hand off the numbers and they bring them forward.
Right, I mean, they they have, they have the software, they have the, uh, I mean. Well, I read that the wheel, I mean, I I could certainly do that, but they have the the technology to do it, but they just need the. Good numbers, I guess, or as good a numbers as we can come up with. Um, we're still trying to determine what, you know, are there expenditures that have been made, um. That have not been entered into the the software system, the Skyward system, and those are the kind of thing for. Tracking down. Once we know that, we should, we should be able to. What would be reasonable budget numbers for twenty twenty four?
Let's move on to the budget update. Do you want to start something to get out of here? Do you want us to start?
Well, I'll, basically, um, we've been meeting at least once a week. I've been working directly with Gus and with others and um. I, you know, we're, we're in, Gus has calculated what he believes are the good revenue numbers for next year, so we have. That piece in place and Barrett has said, yeah, we, we like the numbers you have for revenues for this year and. Next year, so it's just a matter of determining what uh, what expenditures, um. You know, what what kind of reductions we're making, and that's, that's a little bit longer process. Um, and again, I I I don't know that I would wanna divulge what exactly those are, because in some cases, they could not be. I think we're looking, I I think the team has looked at some very creative options, um. And with with, uh, you know, some good planning. I I don't know, I don't know if that's, and as a target date for saying, here's our, here's our overall plan, but um. For next year, budget for next year.
So we, um, the team's probably back, I don't know, six to eight hours over the last couple of weeks. We have Gus is out of town right now, so he's gonna be back next week, so we're gonna schedule a meeting with him to go over some of those preliminary. Um, we've got kind of multiple options, lots of creative options. Um, ideas for revenue increases, for expenditure increases, and then looking at staffing. Um, we met with staff on Friday and we opened up the budget uh, Google Doc again, so we have some plans around that too as well. There are a lot of questions. Um, as part of that feedback, so that we talked to staff about creating an FAQ to have that available. So that they know which things we're looking at, like, for example, a lot of staff talked about transportation. They wouldn't know, you know, like, where we are in the middle of the transportation process and what things we're looking at to um, in. Decrease expenditures, so we thought this is an opportunity to share that stuff out. Also, so that people aren't giving the same feedback. We talked about that too, because there were some really good ideas, but multiple people may have shared them. So just creating um, a vehicle so that staff know, we got all your feedback, here's some answers to some of them. Here are some of the things we're looking at, and just sharing that back out. So that's part of the process, that communication loop. And then, as you can see from the executive summary, as a team, we started out with some guiding principles. And then we also took our.
I didn't mean to cut uh, Todd off. I just wanted to know if you had a date. He was saying, do you have a date? That you would be sharing out those.
Correct, and I thought all this stuff kind of flowed together, so that's why I was just continuing.
Well, I ju- I just wanna make sure we stick to like one thing. So do you have a date for sharing out as Todd?
Well, it kind of, I mean, it leans on what Todd did say, so we started to do some preliminary planning, but there are things that might not have existed, if you, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're.
Intention on what.
Again, I understand we're gonna be going after some, um, you know, uh, uh, additional. Options that that will help this, but it's just sort of those things that takes time. Obviously, the reductions could be very significant, so. I I just, that's why I'm a little bit hesitant to share specific data, because. Like, some of that may not be needed, and I'd send a wrong message if it isn't ultimately needed.
Well, I might disagree politely or respectfully, just in that I have heard that. And we have been talking about transparency, knowing what we know, and we know it, and, you know, having grace for whether that information may or may not be right, or maybe. Different down the line, but if we are starting to think about those reductions, and I guess, I I think I am getting ahead of myself, so I apologize, but. Um, I know the board has been asking for a preview of those and we have not gotten them. Um, and so I, like, there's not transparency right now between the administrative team and the board. I I I was assuming, well, I'm seeing that we're not offering transparency to the staff either. And I think they're adults. I think that they, it would be better to just share information than to, um. With, but I, I mean.
So I I think, uh, so this is a pretty, well, okay, but this is, we're in a pretty small district, so I mean. It's, people are easily identifiable. Um, so I don't know, I guess someone could fact check me on this one, but it. Since people could be identified, it could be closed session.
Absolutely. And that's the plan.
Yeah.
After we go.
Yeah, well, certainly, once we have that solidified, yeah, and and impacted people. One of the things we are looking at too is attrition, there are retirements, resignations, and so on. Um, that that builds into the plan. We don't have those yet, but um, that's, that's part of the issue. And I, it's, it's always devastating to come up with a plan saying, okay. This, these particular staff, we're gonna have to look at uh, reducing contracts, eliminating whatever the case may be. And then you get retirement resignation and, oh, you know, so, I I mean, my theory, the. When I was uh, superintendent, was trying to minimize the angst you put people through when you're, when you're going through these reductions, a lot of times. You're able to make it work without having to to do that big, long layoff list, um. I have been in districts not as a superintendent, where they. Um I have been in districts not as a superintendent, where they come up with these big, long layoffs, and it just, it creates a lot of uh panic, distrust, angst, and then in the end, you didn't need it, you didn't need to do it, and uh you know, why, why would people do that if you don't have to? And again, being a small district, um closely knit district, you're right, uh coming, coming with some of those details right now with my my fingers. I I know it's, I I know everyone wants to um get this solid ASAP and know exactly what we're gonna do, but I think, you know, we're s- what I've seen, we're still working through some of these plans. There's still more to, more to go. And if some of these other things turn out, you may, we may be able to forego some of the other.
I am, I understand the concern about premature sharing on on the reduction ideas. If you already have a rough revenue number, is there a reason that's not being shared with the board?
Um I, yeah, Gus Gus has the number, I don't have the number, um.
If we, I I mean, I'm in the dark.
Yeah.
I know nothing.
Yeah.
I don't know what our revenue number is. I don't know, we've been asking for a long time now for like um even staff lists. If if there's discussion going on about um what positions might be subject to reduction, we we just don't, I know nothing. Maybe other board members have something, but I have nothing, and my concern is if we are on this short timeline, we're at March fifth, so we've got about forty days, right? Week before April fifteenth falls, and if there are reductions being discussed, I just think it's, right, if we're gonna be asked to vote at the next board meeting, I need information before, that long before. So I guess my concern is I know information is trickling in, I feel like it should be trickling to the board. Unless there's a concern that we're not gonna maintain confidentiality, which I, I think we all know our board obligations, but this has to move fast for us, as well as for for all of you, and so I need information with time to process it as a buck sixty a day employee of the district. You know what I mean? I can't, I can't just dump into it with four hours, say, on the weekend. I get information on a Friday, I have a weekend to look through it, I gotta vote on it on Wednesday, doesn't work for me, has never worked, and I I just have to say that very assertively here, it has to not happen that way. I need information kindly.
And I know that that was brought up today, and we talked about whether or not we left a special meeting or something to make sure.
Get my round up.
With the information, Gus pretty much moved out on Thursday morning. And that's how long we've been working on this.
So I'll know Gus, Gus said before the last board meeting, the one that I missed, because my husband was in the hospital in Massa, that he would provide at the last meeting um staffing information. I wasn't here to know if that happened, so I don't know if it but it didn't apparently, so I know that information is there, because he said he would share it, but it hasn't been shared yet. So that's the kind of thing where I'm saying, ah, I know there's information there. I know it's available, I just don't have it.
Well, I can follow up with, with what we missed, even though we didn't have information last week.
I just wanna say, I mean, you know, and this is kind of in a right of a situation uh that we find ourselves in, and Todd, no jumping on you.
Yeah, oh, exactly.
Jumping on Gus, and 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 they don't feel that way. I mean, and our board doesn't will define for activity anyways, right? Um look, I I think that conditions have the immediacy, right? The concern that we've had as a board is we really want to be very collaborative on this, because we don't want things come from not, there's anything wrong, we need guidance from our financials, right? Uh we need to have, uh you know, the guidance, but we also need to be part of the discussion, and I think that that's to some degree assorted from everything we're prior, uh but I think it's also something that reflects the commitment and uh dedication that support has to people who work within it, and we wanna make sure that we're a part of it, and that we look at those responsibilities, and then we engage. And then there's a third part of it, which is, you really, we really want you, Gus, to reach its team, and reach out to us uh, you know, without filter, you know, as direct as you can. Um because we need people to get that information, not having, you know, alternative channels, so when you have something, it it would really help us, and I need to settle our nerves to be able to give that information, you know, directly to us. Uh, you know, when when it comes to, um and I mean, it's just a matter of, I mean, I just you know, more readily accessible for us, we can ask questions, not have a kind of lag, you know, between getting it and getting to answer. But obviously, there's stuff that goes down behind the scenes, and obviously, you can't really talk about things in great detail, but, you know, ask questions, um, and no one wants to create walking forum, and no one wants to, you know, kind of prejudge what ought to happen. But um for my advantage, especially with, you know, a month uh and a half left on the board, I wanna do everything I can to know everything that I can, and make sure that, you know, we're heading in the right direction. So that's out of you thing, right? And we hired you, and and we heard of your expertise, your skill, a- and and we really appreciate that. Um we want to make sure, we we need that little handholding too, but we just wanna make sure that we get that information, have a chance, you know, to speak to it in sufficient detail. Um I think that if we are blindsided by budget crisis, you know, in October and November, and then we respond to it by, you know, oh, overreacting, maybe not considering things much as could have been at times. And and given the fact that, you know, the teachers came to us, the staff came to us at, you know, our last meeting, and and really asked us to, you know, to to get that information to them, uh so they made plans if they were gonna be effective. I mean, that's just making up there. So that's where this is coming from. This is a matter of trust, this a- a- and and I mean, i- it is a matter of communication, it's a matter of concern, but I just want to kind of cast that, really kind of collaborate here as it makes that decision as.
Yeah, and just so you know, I mean, so that we're being efficient. Gus is handling twenty-four, twenty-five budget, I'm trying to clean up twenty-two, twenty-three one, and then just trying to come up with the number so that Barrett could get a a realistic cash flow. Um and then, I I I know Gus has a a revenue number. Um he he told me what it was, and I, it it's, you know, in the fifteen, sixteen million range, and I couldn't remember the rest of it, but um so he's got that, and I know he's even got a target for potential reductions. But that's, that's what we're working on. And I, you know, I I think, like I said, I I told Daniel earlier, I think by Thursday, we'll have a lot more information known. I think by Thursday, hopefully, we'll have um a pretty good idea of what that one thirty debt um will need to be, and we could put that information out. Um I, you know, as soon as we, Barrett could react quickly, um we can get that information out, and then from there, uh that's a good base for Gus to build that twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um and then we'll be able to figure out what what kind of reductions, what kind of staffing plan. Um I I just, I I guess in in my, the way I separated, I was always very protective of staff, um if you did not need to put them through the angst of potential playoff, I just did, and and that's all, that's the superpowers I had worked for way back when, is, you know, in until you really know, let's, let's work through that. Um that that message can be given to the board, of course, but yeah, if 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 you were to keep it confidential, because it's been noted, um a a physician saying this particular position, everyone will know who it is.
And I appreciate all that, you know, also, maybe just to kind of put it out there. If you even create a situation that we're in, and uh we've had a couple of years of information that you had to go through in a very short period of time. So we're very keenly aware, you know, of all that, again, we, we appreciate you guys, they were making, and and tired of you. We're happy to have you along here. So I I I hope that, you know, that A, that I got buried under our nails, uh, you know, and that not directed towards you.
Well, no, and and I'll be honest, five of your seats, I would wanna know.
I appreciate.
I wanna know yesterday, you know, because it is, it's, it's a, it's a critical situation we're dealing with, but um I think, you know, after I talked to uh Kevin earlier, I think we do have various options on a way to address it, so that we can move forward and, you know, keep this uh continuing to be a great district.
I know Ben had a question for that.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just trying to give my answer. So I'm pretty sure by last meeting, you know, Gus was saying, oh, well, we have until April, but then we said, hey, well, what about teachers that might need to look for new jobs or whatever? So I mean, it's only been two weeks.
Right.
And it kind of sounds like we're getting, like, not only do you have to provide uh budget information to Barrett by Thursday, it sounds like there's a lot of things going on right now, so yeah, I'm I'm also anxious to kind of see the the plan, but it has only been two weeks. And so my thought is, again, since people are easily identified, it might be something where it it is a closed meeting, special meeting. And so anyway, I just wanna kind of put this in the context of it's, it's actually been less than two weeks since February twenty-first. So um so I just, so again, I'm also anxious to know, but also keep in mind it's only been less than two weeks.
And I'll just clarify that I'm I'm definitely not asking for a plan to be presented to us today. There have been several board requests for information that I do believe exists, including the staff lists that were made by the leaders and given to us, so that we would have an idea of the organization as it stands now.
Just the overall status.
He said he asked the building owners for staff listings, and we asked to have that, and he said he would provide it. But I got an email, we were all on, um we've asked about the business manager candidates, we know there are seven, and when we found that out, we all asked if we could have some information about them. We haven't gotten that yet.
Share all the annotations.
Yeah, we got it, we can.
I apologize, take it back, sorry, sorry.
And just to update you on that, too, we're also meeting with ten, twelve, three to talk about. Share certain things.
Okay, okay.
We'll have a update there.
Uh and then you have shared uh target revenue or target expenditure cuts and um the way you guys are thinking about positions, and so I think that, as we're saying, a special meeting to talk about that should be called as soon as possible. Um and then obviously, when you have the cash flow, it sounds like you may have it Thursday, if you could share that with the board.
I I mean, I'll have the numbers to bear Thursday, hopefully Thursday morning, and then however soon they can react, we'll, we would.
And having Gus share the uh revenue.
Yeah.
Those are the sort of outstanding.
I I I I believe he might even have um what I would call a reduction number.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna.
Right, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like, because I don't know what, I'm not entirely sure what it is, and I don't know if it, if that's a good number or just an estimate, so.
Okay.
And it kind of sounds like there's multiple scenarios that still kind of depend on variables yet unknown. So, but.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we'll get all those scenarios, and then we'll have that meeting before the next board meeting.
Okay. Allison, do you wanna continue with your update?
Um I don't know if you guys had any other questions on anything that was on there. I know you wanted to know about communication. So I shared some of those things. Uh Jenica started working on the FAQ doc I mentioned earlier. Um just when we met with staff on Friday, uh those that dropped in, we really asked how they wanted communication to look, how they wanted that flow to look. Um they appreciate the updates, so I'll send another one um tomorrow after this meeting, just in case people didn't attend, so they can get the fair information. Uh and they can be updated on some of the things that we just talked about, right, like next steps, um and how that flow is gonna look in timeline. Um we've been having multiple leadership team meetings. Um like I said, Gus is out this week, he'll be bringing you next week um to share some of our work with him, um and then obviously schedule that special board meeting. Um continue to review staff feedback, have conversations about association, reviewing the Google forums, and then, like I said, the guiding principles and the policy language on it would also be shared with staff tomorrow, so that they know exactly what we're looking at um as we head into some of these potentially more difficult decisions.
Allison, you had a note indicating that the team wanted to clarify what each of these mean with regards to the criteria that would be. So is that something that you're clarifying internally, or were you asking for clarification?
No, we wanted to make sure that, as we talked through these, that they realize that the policy doesn't weight them.
Right.
That they're not in any order, they're just things that we can consider, so we just wanted to make sure that was clear to staff, so that they didn't think they were, like, in order. Um so that's something we share on the update.
I have, I have a few questions. Um sorry, my brain is having trouble focusing. Um the guiding principles, um I take it the leadership team established those this week? Have been rolled out yet?
Yeah.
You all just sat down together and you made them, yeah, okay. Um and so there was no staff input on these, right, or non-additives? Do you consider them to be finalized, or is this a draft that you're rolling out?
Well, we're gonna ask for feedback, but we're gonna share that this is what the team determined as guiding principles, but of course, they have to give that.
Do we get to give you feedback?
Yep, that's why they're on, yeah.
Uh so um what, meeting state and federal statutes, that probably should include board policy, district policy. Um I think, maybe other board members disagree. Uh on the flexibility on class size, again, uh thinking about policy, I I actually haven't looked at the class size policy. I think that's on the old policy list, right? So I would have to go to the district website, and I was not successful in finding it. I don't know who it gives discretion to, to exceed our class size policies, if it identifies that. Um but I I don't know if there's an attempt built into that policy, so hopefully, in writing this guiding principle, someone has looked at that policy to determine if this is consistent with that.
Yeah, with both of them, okay.
Uh and I'm, so it sounds like you think that the board policy is not, is fortitory, not firm, in terms of class size?
That's what it's listed in the files, just the way we have that.
K five, K through five, and then four through eight?
Yep.
Overlapping like that?
Oh, I bet you they just.
Eight through three.
I bet, no, I think it's.
Yeah, so it either is six through eight.
I'd say through five and six.
Right, sorry, okay.
We were just thinking of the buildings, so I thought you should have thrown it aside.
Okay, okay. All right, I guess I'll have to find the policy. Uh I could send it to you. Oh, that would be great. I mean, I'm sure I can find it, I'm sure it's been sent before, but they're just hard to find. Um and our, we also have our own guiding principles that we need to work on, right? Because I think the board should have them too. Um but this is great. I appreciate that you all are putting together guiding principles in a someplace, I don't remember where you mentioned, I I take it these guiding principles, these are the criteria you're using in evaluating staff reduction potentials, right?
Yeah, because we looked at, yeah, we looked at your guiding principles as well, but I felt like those were broader just on the budget process, and these are specific to staff.
Right, so universal instruction is at the heart of it, obviously student learning and emotional well-being. Then you're gonna flex class sizes, equity lens. Yeah, I remember looking at these, thinking, this is great. The only thing I didn't understand was what possibility is thinking as, is that, is that a term of art in education?
So some of those flexible, some of that flexible thing, so is, we're looking at positions. We're looking at student needs, just trying to think outside the box.
On the um, on the, well, I don't know where it is, but I know some of the, over the past at least year and a half, we've been, a year? I don't know. We've been talking about job descriptions and needing job descriptions for positions, so I, I'm assuming, but maybe I shouldn't assume, but I think we ought to have job descriptions um for positions, so I I mean, if we're gonna break scrutiny to positions and decide not only whether, you know, it's it's a cut or keep kind of calculus, right? Do you cut, do you keep? Like, I can't evaluate keep without knowing what the scope of a position is, right? So I know that for some positions, we don't have job descriptions yet, or perhaps the job descriptions don't match with what people are doing. I've been thinking about that, especially in.
You burned it up.
I feel, I mean, thinking about it with some admin positions in particular. So I would ask that whatever scrutiny you're bringing to teachers, you bring to to every position in the district, make sure we have a job description. Make sure we're, it's accurate, so that when it comes to the board and we're looking at keep or cut, I have the criteria, I need to understand looking at your guiding principles, possibly looking at our board guiding. possibly looking at our board guiding principles if we have them, looking at the equity lens, whatever, that I can look at that job institutionally and say, cut or keep, right, I see what the recommendation is, see what the impact on our institution is. You know, I, it would help me a great deal in, you know, calculating where my vote goes, to have that information real clear for me. Sharing that, I, I'm really just wondering, but.
I have been. Um, I would, I'll add on because I, I, I would like this to be communicated to Gus and the entire administrative team that, um, I know we're under a time crunch for thinking about, uh, contracts and teacher positions. And so when I asked him about how he's thinking about administrative cuts or salaries, positions, all of that, it doesn't seem to be on his radar in this moment. Well, his response was, yes, everything's on the table, we'll consider that, but because of this timeline, we're focusing on, on this step. And I want to empower everybody to, to think about those things at the same time and be able to come to us with recommendations for bold, and how they thought about it at the same time. Uh, because yeah, that's obvious why, but, um, I understand the, you know, the top position, but it's building this district office, all of them. Okay, good, because that was not always what he had communicated, so I wanted to make sure. Understood that, anybody?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, where administrative contracts also need to be looked at. Uh, and I remember distinctly bringing up a future agenda topic last, uh, last, um, month, I guess, and about how that could be a little bit easier, so.
It is on our agenda list, but. Are there any questions, um? Comments? I know we have, what, we had thirteen people online earlier, do we have?
Thirty-one online.
Flipped it and reversed it, thirty-one people online, that's Mr. Williams, would you like to thank him?
Hi, Zach Williams, second grade teacher at Hartway. I just had a quick question for Todd. So those numbers that, um, that you will have by Thursday, will those be communicated with staff, or when might we know those numbers?
I mean, I can, they'll, they'll be meaningless, all they are is basically forecast of certain expenditures from into February through June thirtieth for the auditors, and, and there'll be um, there, there, there's not gonna be any, a lot of details, just basically cash flow numbers, so we could send them out, but they, they won't mean much to anybody other than the folks at Baird.
Sure.
So.
Okay, thank you so much, that was nice.
Is, is the concern that you want to understand when our cash flow like runs out?
Yes.
Okay, so I think the, the hopefully helpful response to that is that, um, the reason we're looking at this twelve thirty eight borrowing is to make sure we do not have a cash flow shortage. And that's, and I think that has been guaranteed at previous meetings, or, you know, as close to a guarantee as we can get, is that we're not gonna let that situation happen where we would have a gap in cash flow and we are going to pay salaries, I believe Gus gave us a ninety-nine point, and I, you know.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, assurance, I think, I think that's what he was sort of asking.
And, and the numbers I'm working on are like,
Okay.
What have we spent on transportation through February, what do we expect to need through basically, uh, June thirtieth and then maybe into early September? Which, uh, again, doesn't mean a lot to anybody other than the folks at Baird.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I have one more question? Uh, I just want to know now, it sounds like, you know, we're kind of moving a little quicker, do you think maybe staff potentially will know before the April fifteenth?
Yes.
Date?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. That's all, thanks guys for everything.
Thanks. Anyone else, or anyone on the line? It sounds.
Um, Danielle, can you just circle that, because I had a question earlier.
Oh, I'm so sorry, did I, it's okay, I didn't push myself back into the conversation either.
For sure.
I guess the question is, with regards to, um, having more information, and you anticipate having more information this Thursday, this week Thursday, correct? Is it, is it appropriate for us to look to times and dates for next week to have a special session, so that we can make sure that we have the information?
Yeah, that would be up to, yeah, no, I, I will not be available next week, um, after Tuesday. But, um, wha- whatever I have, everyone else.
Yeah, I was just looking for Gus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, once I hand off, my, my goal is tomorrow is to hopefully get the last of primarily the, this probably doesn't mean much, but the three hundred objects accounts and some of the other information to, uh, Baird, I've gotten probably about ninety-two percent of the information to them. They can then do their cash flow, and then I'm gonna turn around and start trying to chip away at the audit, because that is due for, uh, and the reporting by, um, March twenty-sixth, I believe, so.
Okay, so the Baird turnaround is likely something that would have moved quickly and we'd be able.
Uh, I, I will, I, I will look at them to do that ASAP. Um, now, I, I do know that, uh, Kim, who's been working on this, is, um, I believe gonna be the new business manager of Cedarburg, so I don't know where the focus is at, but there's a whole bunch of other people there that can, uh, Kevin will make sure if it's done.
Thank you.
Um, sorry, and there is one more thing, so Allison, the, the next update you're sharing with staff will be your second update. Second staff update. It's the first one you shared with us, or have you, or?
You mean, yeah, after the last one, I reading?
Yeah. You said that one, okay, so can you?
Yeah, sure.
And then how might the board have access to the FAQ Jennifer's creating, and the new survey responses and feedback, how?
So once we get a chance to put that together, share it on the staff, we have to share it.
So how long, do you know how long they're keeping the survey open, and you're like?
We feedbacked, we did close the survey, sorry. We did close the survey on Friday, so it was open for another week.
Okay.
Um, and we just started looking at feedback, and then started working on the FAQ, which has been out for the last couple days, but I have another leadership team. So we'll circle back to this too.
Okay. I know what I forgot to say, sure, can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
Say, thank you. Thank you to the admin team for making space to listen to teachers. And for doing that, let me ask you two.
Yeah.
Forgetting to say that. Okay, um, all right. Hearing anything else, emails, okay, we're gonna move on to, thank you, Todd.
Thank you, thank you so much. We'd like to touch on this.
Yeah. Uh, movement, um. It's a consent agenda, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Item four A.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which contains, um, personal changes that require approval. That would be the retirement of Lynn Carlson, retirement of Maria Pereira, Carrie Whissing resignation, Kevin Rogers resignation. All in favor, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Can you post? Thank you to all of those people, for what they've done, for just. Um, we are moving on to communications, item five A, operational referendum survey proposals. Is there anything you'd like to leave with, Allison, about these?
No, I was just gonna say that obviously this is a board decision, um, hoping that you guys can make a decision tonight, so that I can communicate out. Um, I know that Perry's been involved with the work over the last several months, just to be in the know, just in case, but also understand that if you guys decide to go in a different direction, um, so just hoping that you guys can make a decision tonight, so I can communicate out, so.
Do you wanna entertain a motion, or, well, actually, we might have to have some discussion to determine if we're the motion, right?
I think it makes sense to go with Perry's group.
How was Warren?
Well, they've done survey, they've done surveys with us before, they know the context of our district, and I think that knowledge is gonna be very helpful moving forward.
You reviewed both proposals, please.
I did.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts?
I have a lot of confusion, okay, I feel like both proposals were formatted very differently. And so, um, one of the things I had wondered about was if we were, for instance, to go with I call them SP in my email, now, of course, that's school perception. You know, they broke it out into stages, but some of those stages are mandatory, right, and so it would be a total cost of X. And then there would seem to be a la carte options, so I wasn't confident in how we would identify what if we were, like, what would we be voting on, things?
Uh, we would be voting on which groups to go in for an operational referendum survey. And I believe, I need to blow up the proposal, I can tell you, I think the difference is about a couple grand total for the package, right, like, when I. I think we're allowed to say it. I don't know, I don't know if we're allowed to say it, the, um, it's a three thousand dollar difference.
Well, yeah.
And the optional services are just, so I would say we could hone in on optional services we wanted to, uh, do if we want to do those at all, but I would be looking at the phase one through four, school percent of the process of investment at this point versus what I think we're doing.
So it's all one of the kinds.
I don't know. Um, so maybe it would make sense to understand what your criteria or what you're thinking, yeah, can be.
So, uh, my feeling is actually that, uh, well, we have a question about where to go, once it would be side, you know, point, so, uh, further to, uh, entertain discussions upon or another. Uh, I suppose if we talked about this publicly versus in closed sessions, maybe in closed sessions, we'd have a little bit of work, and, uh,
And they're looking to us.
We, we, yeah, we'd be talking, uh, about negotiation, but I don't want to talk about negotiation, don't say that's mad, or whatever. I think that if you look at two proposals in general, right? You have one proposal that's, uh, attached, that's detailed, that breaks it down, uh, phases, that goes into much greater depth, and then you have another proposal that kind of summarizes a couple of points that's a flat piece. And, um, I'm just gonna tell you, you know, I'm a tax law, and I had a lot of flat pieces. And I, I will tell you, as a lawyer, you do a lot of things that you have to, because you have to. Um, so that being a lawyer, I'd be concerned about being locked into flat pieces, that, that uh, if you need more work, or if you need more compensation, whatever. And frankly, you know, I, I, I'm I, I worked obviously with both groups, because we did use school perception before, um, I believe that school perception is, and, and, and that people obviously have their place, but that, uh, school perception, uh, has a lot of, uh, good reputation, it's commonly used. Um, I do like the fact that they are talking about, but no, we're at different stages here, and, uh, it, even if we are not going to sign the proposal as is, we have, you know, an option to negotiate. And, uh, I guess in part for today, I think that it might prove us to continue further discussions. And I would suggest that we go and have further discussions with school perception, someone else might, uh, you know, have, uh, an idea to have, uh, further discussions with the administration group, or, you know, to, to go to vote, try to flush out the polls a bit more. I think we need to build more action, getting, you know, some questions then, but, um, my suggestion would be that we, uh, that we authorize, uh, you know, Danielle, it, it is something that you'd be leading, uh, that we authorize, uh, you and the administration to, uh, engage in further backfunding, uh, with school perception.
Okay, so.
What, what, can I, can I respond to that?
Well, I would, okay.
Uh, well, because I have, I have met with school perceptions, right? Uh, and I do have an opinion on, on which group I'd like to go with, but I just wanna put this, like, the high level overview on this is that time is of the essence and we are behind. And so, um, I would say maybe we could attempt to negotiate if that is important, but I think the, the cost will be worth it. Uh, I think, uh, you know, a couple dollars here or there might not make the difference, what's important to me is getting our message out and getting the survey done right, and they worked with a lot of our neighboring schools. I think that the main difference for me between the two groups is that school perception is, um, I consider like engineered or something, I, I saw them presented was being, it's like the way they look at data and utilize data, I think might mesh better with the way that we receive information. Um, and will help us to utilize that information, so I was just, I was really impressed with that, and I would if I were making a motion, but I won't, I mean, it would be to before the school perceptions with the ability to negotiate, but to, to move forward, if that's not possible.
Okay, just out of curiosity, has Donovan Group not followed through with what they've done with us before?
So I, the, I guess I would say the way I receive information, I have not found the way that they analyze the data and present it to us to have helped us move forward and anything. They focus, their focus is communications, and I think you can kind of see that because it's like, um, wordier questions or responses than the way school perceptions might do it, and it, and I love Perry, it's just always positive, you know, so it's like, oh, and so it's like seventy percent of our teachers feel this way about something, and we'll say, okay, well, and, and, and their response will be, um, well, that's good, because in other districts, the regular, you know, sixty is like below, and like, that's not the, so, so I have not been satisfied in that regard.
Well, so you, you know how I feel about consultants, I, I, I
Yeah.
don't like
But we need.
hiring consultants, however, yes, I'm also aware that we need, now, we have an option where we know what the product is, we've worked with them before, they understand the context of our district, we need to, we need to move fast, you know.
School perception can move fast, they know our district, because they've worked with neighboring districts, and they've gotten the job done in terms of operational referendums for neighboring districts, they go like, they want.
Okay, uh, but but again, we, we know, like, again, you were saying that, um.
Okay, we just agree.
No, I, it's, and, but you're saying that going with a totally new agency is going to be time effective. And I, I just, I, I don't know, I agree with that.
I think they can get our story, and the way they said they do the process is they would talk to board members, they would talk to administration, understand their story and the messaging, they would then, um, create the, that messaging or that story, and that they would get feedbacks from various people on it, like, but they have a timeline in here, whose timelines are the same.
And again, I've seen things wrapped in shiny packages too, like new curriculum, that's been very base, and it's just awful.
It's new, I think they're about.
Oh, but like, I, so I would.
But being wrapped in Chinese packaging is exactly what we need for someone to do a school survey about, you know, how the people in this community feel.
I think it's about telling our school.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the, um, school perceptions proposal.
Second.
Do you like more discussion? All right, let's just do, uh, there is a motion and a second to adopt the school perceptions proposal. To move forward with school, is that fair, to move forward with school perceptions? Is there? Yes. Operational referendum certainly. Okay, um, Colonel Carlin?
Yes.
Andy Franklin?
Yes.
Benwyn?
No.
Colonel Bennett to cross, yes. The other was aye, so, or with school perceptions, but thank you to Perry, we appreciate all they've done. Okay, uh, okay, moving on, uh, staff and student survey proposals. So we wanted to bring this back to talk about doing staff and student surveys, um, and where the board sort of was sitting on this, we do our proposals, um, around school perceptions and from the Donovan group in this area, Allison, do you have any thoughts on this?
Uh, my original recommendation was because you're doing an operational community survey, and because we've been providing the opportunities for staff to give feedback on some of our questions of focus, um, that it would be fiscally responsible to conduct these two surveys this spring. Um, that it would be fiscally responsible to not do these two surveys this spring. Um, so that would be my recommendation, obviously it's a board decision.
I'll make that motion. To not, uh, add this survey on this hearing.
There's no second, so that motion.
We can wait on.
Three seconds, is there a second? I'll give someone a chance, is there a second? The only second is if you want to talk about it. So now discussion on not doing the proposals, um. I'm okay with sort of not making a decision right now, I wouldn't necessarily vote to not do them. I've been talking with teachers today about the, like, communication PR ideas, I like this idea of thinking about. Like, maybe the staff survey might not be. Maybe there are ways to think about doing that in a less formal way, a less cost, uh, costly way. But, uh, thinking about like, the, the dollars for, for Perry's, something like five thousand to do both services. So, it's not gonna put us, it's not gonna put us deeper, like, it's just some budget hole, um, to do them. So there is an importance to me and knowing where our students are at this year. Uh, but there's also an importance in how we communicate out right now about our district. So thinking about. Whether it's more important to survey staff or how we do it and students versus like, perhaps utilizing money to do like yard signs or like community communication. Around our district, things like that, so I'm, I'm thinking about it, I wouldn't, I don't know that I could say don't do it at all, but.
So I would have to say I agree with that. My, one of the questions I had sent earlier was, you know, are there recommendations about. Potentially changing timelines with regards to doing these? There is something that's legitimate about a point that Perry brought up, which is fatigue. And I think that if we end up issuing a variety of surveys that have cost the district money. And we don't have the response rate that we were hoping for, we need to prioritize a particular survey.
Yeah.
And then other surveys, I think. Of course, we want that feedback. But also I'm wondering if there are different timelines or other avenues through which that information could be collected for right now.
I think at this point we have enough questions, we've kind of edited our own survey, uh, in a way. That we can probably do our own survey, uh, and I, again, I, I am. Like I said before, I, I don't really think schools need to hire as many consultants as we do. Uh, and so again, with the last one, it's, I know, yeah, I guess we have to. Uh, but in this case, I, I think that, you know, we, we've done a few surveys in a row. I think we have enough information and data to do our own. And honestly, if you wanted me to bake pie charts and whatever, I could do it for free, so, you know. Sure, send it to me and I'll do. It's not, I mean, we, 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 okay, what's hard is coming up with questions, right? We have a lot of questions, we have a lot of data, we can do our own survey. Uh, I think we have the, the capacity to do that. I don't like the idea of constantly spending money, uh. On outside contractors or whatever, consultants or whatnot, just, just because we've done it before. So it's just, anyway, I think we spend too much money on consultants. What?
So I, I have a, a thought, okay, a question, I don't, um. Cause I, I personally prefer to, in a perfect world, we would continue year, year over year with surveys, um. But we have a principal here and our student services director and a few teachers. Maybe it's unfair, but I'd be curious to hear what you think about the value and merits of continuing these surveys this year. Right, so I mean, Anna's here, um, I see Jenny, I, you know, I'd be curious to know what you guys think. If you're willing to speak, no pressure.
Sure, um, we did, we did talk about the surveys, um. Essentially, the, when we were talking about what are ways we can eliminate spending. Quickly, um, for this current school year and that was one of the things we talked about and said, okay. It is data we used for planning, for sure. Um, it was meaningful data for us, um, both from the families and from the students. And the student data did, uh, help us draft.
Interesting, like, son. The mic's on check out.
This student data did help us draft some, some goals and really think about the student lens and student perspective, which was helpful. Um, what, what I'll be talking about next is our response to the spring student, student data. Student engagement survey, I think it was called, um, and then we took one of those questions. Um, that seemed something, like something we wanted to attack as an administrative. Um, and crafted ways, um, particularly. Particularly for the experiences our students are having, right? Um, to address that within our buildings and then also we just took, I'm gonna take a dipstick mid-year. So essentially we did that, we said, okay, we're gonna take this question. For us, this is what we want to take a dipstick on mid-year and then our thought was. When we were doing the planning for the school year that we would then administer the survey again at the end of the year. Uh, when we said, okay, so the surveys, this is something that needs to come off, knowing that that was data that felt valuable to us. We agreed that we could probably get by, um, with pulling that maybe. I don't know if it's wrong, because then when you said, you say you took the survey from the Donovan group and you gave it yourself, isn't. It was one, it was one question we took. And we did talk about getting, like, getting back to, like, an end of survey, um, data result. And really, again, picking that, at least that one question that we are gonna be monitoring and looking at from the student perspective.
So you would replace a consultant survey with some smaller version that you would just.
I think we, we, we would be relatively comfortable with that.
It doesn't change the amount of work you have to do, right? You're still doing the same work, whether it's a consultant or you.
It makes it relatively easy and, and while I, while I would say it was really nice having that. Um, and I think potentially something we would want to look back. Given the situation we're in right now, I would feel comfortable saying maybe we take this off the table. And that's something we're willing to kind of put our heads around together, um.
It concerns me that you say it was really valuable to fashioning support for students, right? So if we're cutting that and it was really important to fashioning that support for students, it feels. Do you know what I mean? It feels like not a, not a wise decision if it was very helpful in your work. Which, you know, doing the most important thing we do.
All right, all right, is there something special?
Nope, you're good.
All right, um, so taking a look at the development of our goals, so we talked about those hundred day plans. So really thinking about how do you actionably look at making change within a school environment and how do you measure that, right? So our look at that entire survey is really where we gleaned into like, where are both performance areas? Where are areas where are high performance? If we are looking at measuring a particular area for the end of this school year. What ends up happening is we end up asking that one question, so we can wrap up this school year, but it doesn't leave us with new data then. To start our planning for next year, unless we continue to build on what we are currently doing and saying that's a continuing for us. So that's where that gap in knowledge would come, um, and, you know, is that something that we can work around? We absolutely can, if it's a possibility, it's important to the district and fiscally responsible at this point in time. But yes, there are advantages to having more in-depth information for our students.
We would, we would still need to survey the students. So it's not like we would walk away and not seek to understand more from their experience.
Would you prefer to continue with the Donovan model then, just rerun the same survey? So you have that longitudinal view? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm an apple to apples person and so that's my only comment that I, I like to see. I like to see apples to apples.
I would concur with you that apples to apples is, is ideal and, you know, at, at the same time too, most, um, perception surveys for students. That you see, um, you know, the ADL has some built in, we have other avenues to explore those kind of climate surveys on how students are feeling. And there are resources that are out there that provide those questions through the costs. And so I just, there are open source resources that you can access and I just want to be real estate about that as well.
Andy, you have it.
Yeah, I did, you know, I, uh. I think about all that's going on and part of me thinks, well, what is the survey gonna show and that, that tells me that, and then I'm talking about staff. Uh, but then I think to myself, how can you not have surveys to know exactly what's going on right now, what they keep up to there. Um, I also look to people get. Stick paid surveys, there's such thing as survey fatigue. But I mean, I gotta be honest with you, I've been here for just under fifteen years as a board member and, uh. I've never been, this is not an insult in any way, I've never met someone who didn't want to give an opinion. Uh, because, and, and that, I'd say that teacher opinion, that city care, helps a lot about what's going on in the community. Uh, in, in the school and they want to contribute to make things better. And I think that if you don't have that outlet, uh, or safe to valve, that that also causes issues, so. You know, and you know, the reason why data makes it one way or another, it's short, but you don't know what to really get it. Uh, I think they've got to have a survey, however, uh, for the staff, um. I definitely think, yeah, I've had students, I think, that are, you can take my path over doing. And, and the apples to apples comment, uh, does nothing. Uh, you, you need to be able to have some continuity, um. So my recommendation in this case, I have a span of survey, but. You know, if we have any hesitancy about it, or if we have any format that we do it in, uh. I would advise tabling it for.
I have a split the baby idea. I'm gonna split a different baby.
Okay, yeah, so we're talking about apples to apples here, but we picked a different consulting for the other survey we're gonna do, so. Uh, I know, but anyways, but the other thing is, it sounds like we have enough resources to do our own survey. Uh, like I said, you know, this is through a Google form that goes to, uh, tabular sheet. Probably either Google Sheets or Excel and that data is pretty easy to organize in, in a way that everyone can understand. So I think that, that's what I'm hearing, but then I'm also hearing that having the same survey would be nice, so I'm kind of, so would. Which one is it?
So, so this is, this is what I propose. Um, there is three separate surveys that the Donovan group does, staff, student, caregiver. Uh, an efficient solution that focuses on students first and gives our administrative leadership and teachers what they need. To help understand our students better is to go with a student survey, but pause on the staff and caregiver survey. That would be one way to do it.
All right, well, right now there's a motion to not do any of them, my thinking is around. It, it would be nice to see a timeline, like you're about to talk about a student survey, you do. So it would be nice at our April Cal possibly to connect this to strategic planning and think about. Um, where are the feedback and engagement loops for students and where are the feedback and engagement loops for staff? And so when, when do those happen? So maybe we rethink the cycle of staff surveys and if that makes sense fiscally, now that's what we could do. And we could see where and how we are connecting with students and if, and if and when. When did the student survey happen last year, maybe? Okay, so it means we have time to think about what that should look like based on all the other, like, data. And again, fiscally responsible, I get it, but it's, it's twenty-five hundred dollars and so we have to think about. What the value of that is versus twenty-five hundred dollars you might spend on. Food at, I don't know, at, at various events or certain, you know. There's lots of ways you can spend twenty-five hundred dollars probably that's not as, not equitable stewardship. But perhaps twenty-five hundred dollars for a student survey that gives us longitudinal data is not fiscally irresponsible, would be my wondering.
So one thing we have to keep in mind, and I'm not against, uh. Again, yeah, twenty-five hundred might not be so bad, but the sum of all the consulting fees do add up. And, uh, at some point, uh, you know, that sum equals the sum of, or equals the teacher's salary. And one of the things we have to be aware of when we're saying, oh, well, twenty-five hundred here, fifty-five thousand here. Or whatever, I mean, that does add up. And when you're making decisions about school funding, that's, you always look at like, what are the highest impact areas? And this, this might be a high impact area, um, but, you know, keep in mind too that. Of the high impact areas, uh, teachers make the highest impact. So we just have to be careful, I think, again, just. It would be, I think I've asked for this before, where's, how much money are we paying on all our consulting fees? And, well, okay, but. Okay, less than one percent of a budget, but also, uh. Are those numbers accurate?
I, I think we should stay focused on these surveys and whether we're gonna have a motion to vote on.
Well, there is a motion, there is a. All right, uh, does anybody want to have more discussion on the motion on the table currently?
I'm still kind of curious what they're trying to say, is, are, do you have?
The question was, in an ideal world, would they like longitudinal data? And they said, yes, apples to apples, that's correct behind this statement. Yes, they would like that.
And so that's why I proposed, if there's concern about budget and everyone's trying to be flexible, if it was me. We keep talking about focusing on students, student feed and student wellness. It seems to me in this hierarchy of three potential surveys, staff, caregiver, student. Probably the most important voice to inform curriculum building, teacher intervention, is the student survey. What do you, do you wanna, we have the experts here, curious what you.
I would echo that prioritizing what our students need and looking at that data longitudinally is gonna be incredibly important in thinking about. How we service students, how we build goals out for our schools in the upcoming years. Um, I think to your point, um, our staff has been provided with many opportunities to weigh in on things. But I do think, to your point, Danielle, reflecting on this idea of when those cycles take place is really important. And making sure that that caregiver component is a part of those cycles is largely important.
The motion doesn't belong to him anymore, it lost to the table.
That's right, okay, okay.
So I'll amend it to approve the Donovan group's student.
Sorry, we're gonna follow this, you have to move to amend.
I'll move to amend.
There's a second. So, sorry, move to amend to change your recommendation to. Doing the student survey. Or wait, actually, there's two, we have proposals, ah, okay. Let's just vote on, oh, you can, you can say what Donovan group, sure. Or just to do the student survey and we could push that conversation to April Cal when we have it in larger contexts of.
Well, I, I, I have a, I have an easier solution than stacked motions. Let's just vote on Ben's original motion and then make a separate motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor of, uh, the motion on the table, which is to not do either staff or student survey? Say aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion fails, is there a new motion that someone would like to?
So I'll make a motion to, um. To ask Donovan group to continue to do the student survey this spring.
Second.
Any one of the guys, let's just move to. Any other discussion on that?
I just.
I just want to make you feel better too about this, from this, yeah, perspective, uh. Our, one of our goals was around collective advocacy and, which I'll be like talking about. That data was not pulled from the staff, um, the staff feedback survey, it was pulled from. The RTI PLC Current State Survey, which, um, is, is our work and we're not done with that work. And then to me, it feels like if we're thinking about, um. Serving people to that, that it, I would probably prioritize the survey over, over that staff engagement survey. So, if I can shoot the letter.
Thank you. Uh, there's a motion and a second, uh. No further discussion on it?
I just have a a question, so then if we're approving this one particular survey, that we are. Not going to break back a conversation around caregiver surveys?
Oh, I'd like to still have a conversation, I I I would say that my, I thought would be April Cal. Tie in the communication, feedback engagement piece of our strategic planning and talk about, so we have a better understanding of where those checkpoints are.
I just wanted to be sure that the motion wasn't accidentally about cycles of surveys, et cetera, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of moving forward with the Donovan group's student survey, aye?
Aye.
I mean, both. Okay, motion passes, thank you for that.
Okay, and thank you Kelly for agreeing to talk to us about this last minute, I know it was a. But um, this is a, the survey was mentioned in the uh. Teams were talking about guidelines and it just seems like. Good work to hear about, I suppose.
Okay, sure, I'm happy to kind of double back about this and share, um. Really part of, part of how we got there, um, it ties back to our goal, so kind of connecting some of those strings. Um, too, we sort of think sometimes things fall away and it it helps for everybody to kind of reconnect the dots, right? So we know that collective efficacy is very, very important in terms of moving students forward. So student outcomes is tied to staff. Reporting high levels of collective efficacy, which is essentially feeling that they're all working toward a collective goal, right? Um, knowing that that collective efficacy, a lot of that work often happens not with. A superintendent or a director of student services or a principal standing in front of a room of people. I'm telling them what to do, but it's the people doing the work, engaging with the work, talking about the work, focusing centered on student data. Um, to help achieve student goals, right? And as we were talking about preparing for this school year, one of the things we wanted to do was survey our staff. Around collective efficacy and we use this RTI PLC current state survey, which we told. Out of uh solution tree, which is really the source we use for um our professional development around the. Around PLCs, for professional learning communities. So we did give that survey to staff um in the spring, in March, I wanna say. Um, and there were a few things that jumped out at us. But this, this response to this question, I believe that everyone on my team is pulling in the same direction. Was something that we felt we needed to address and go after, and we really felt like it was our. Responsibility to set the stage, um, to move the dial in this regard, because this is collective efficacy, right? Um, so in the spring, sixty three percent of our staff agreed with this statement. Twenty six percent neutral for us that, you know, we felt like we can do better than that. Um, and eleven percent of our staff disagreed that everyone on their team was pulling in the same direction. Um, and then you can see that little chart below rates the level of importance, right? And um, so what I did was I compared. In the green was is the spring results. In the blue was the fall and it was very late fall, I would say fall winterish, so almost like a mid-year point for us. And instead of relaunching the entire survey, we just asked that that one question related to the survey. And you can see growth there, have we arrived? No. And my guess is that we're gonna continue to push toward this work through um PLCs um into next school year because there's still more work to do. Um, but we're we're proud.
But you see.
That growth is made, yep, and it's really important for people to know and see this, so. Just so you know, this data was shared at the building level by the building guiding guiding coalitions with the staff. And um, the buildings addressed and used that data differently, um, and that work was guided by their their building leadership team or their their guiding coalitions. Um, I can kind of talk a little bit, and Anna's here, so she can probably also share. Um, some of the actions they took, but they presented the the data to their staff at Glen Hills.
Do you wanna just talk about what you did?
Because it's great. I feel silly because it's not.
Thanks, Kelly, um, so part of what we did is presented this information to the staff and had an opportunity with our peer professionals. And the in the meeting session with us as part of professional development, which is really important because it takes all members of the community to move in one direction. Um, we had the opportunity to do some analogies about what what life is like for students here, what life looks like for staff, and to really think about. Um, what it means to pull in the same direction and what are those things that we can do and commit to? To get us moving in that way, and some of the work that we developed was the staff. Made a renewed commitment to really look at making sure that they're modeling that that positivity and that idea that we are all on one team to our students. Um, through their daily interactions with one another. Another area that they talked about was making sure that they took opportunities to visit other classrooms and provide positive feedback to their colleagues. And so um, they they initiated some things like that, we had some opportunities to kind of recycle back to that. During our weekly staff meetings for them to have options to talk about like really cool things that they saw and celebrate that as a staff. And um, in addition to that, another key area that we looked at was calling out instances of. Um racist and biased language that occur within our classrooms with students and developing strategies to address that. So um, we reviewed some resources from the A D L, people talked about different brainstorms, the way that they attack that in their classrooms. And how we could renew this idea of making sure that we, like if we see it, we have to say something about it, we have to address it. And so those were the three key areas that the staff focused on to ensure that we're pulling in the same direction in terms of supporting our school culture.
Yeah, I know, it's great, and then um Kirkway did something similar, their guiding coalition presented. Um, the same information to their staff, um, and they also talked about about. Their work within PLCs and their PLCs are arranged differently in the different buildings, um, content areas here. Grade level, um, professional learning teams at Kirkway Elementary School, and so they also talked about that work within their PLCs. Uh, and really feeling like they're all moving in the same direction, so that was, that was really good and. Um, with the respect, we survey results. Um, which is a little bit about what we talked about here, you can also see the growth um between May and December, uh. At Kirkway, um, students agreeing um that um students show respect. Um, for each other, um, at Kirkway, in the spring, seventy eight percent of students agreed, in the winter, eighty one percent. Of students agreed, um, so there's growth there, not jaw dropping growth, but growth. Um, and again, they really talked a lot about modeling those, the words of respect, the language around respect, celebrating amazing people. Um, demonstrating respect for one another. Um, and then you can also put the Glenn Hills data um for students around that same respect question from May until. May compared to December, so.
Do you know what the response rates were from students that surrounded and from teachers, I mean, I'd be curious. I know there had been some challenges getting students to participate um in the past.
At Kirkway, there were uh like, I think almost every student in the building responded to the survey. Um, it was done during their cell time with Mr. Kelly. Um, and so that response was pretty high at Glen Hills, it took us a couple tries. Um, we pushed that survey out a couple times with them in classes, and I can't remember when our ultimate number was.
They, we landed close to about eighty percent of the trust.
Yeah. Um, and I know there were some questions about how disaggregated was the data. Um, at Kirkway, the data um was kind of shared out at grade level data, so you're seeing just a snapshot, like a school-wide snapshot. Uh, but they did have an opportunity at Kirkway to look at their specific grade level data and make some plans around their grade level. And then at Glen Hills, you guys went pretty deep in terms of dividing um. By race, ethnicity, gender, grade level, uh, to really kind of public identify, you know, where some of our, where some of our areas are.
You will never swarm any with that data, I know, I would love to see all of it. And you know what I'm always interested in, because I think it's sometimes the noise gets lost with cohorts, I'm always interested in year over year. Like to see if that, with this question in particular, I'd be curious to see if as a class goes through. Does their sense of respect for each other change? Which is, I think, more interesting than the big picture, because you always lose the eighth graders, I think, and create a false.
Yeah.
So if you've done that, and I would love to see it.
I will tell you, and this is just from eyeballing it in general, the respect. Responses like the um agreeing that students shall respect for one another declines as students age.
Yeah, which is kind of expected in some level, but it is so.
I just wanna note that it's the highest, it's at its highest level for eighth grade class, our eighth grade class has the highest level out of anyone in.
Yeah.
School right now, in terms of feeling that way.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I I will, I mean, typically, yes, we see a drop in six and seven. And then I I would be curious to kind of look at some trend data as we're expanding, to look at whether or not that transforms the eighth grade.
Right, yeah.
Our issue is that the Donovan survey didn't disaggregate that data.
Oh, right.
Right, it was, it was just when we went back and pushed out in Google forum.
Right.
Yep.
So that's. Wonder if we can pass them.
Yeah, we could.
For one else, we did all the demographics.
They does, they they disaggregated by demographics, but not by grade level, so if we could ask them to do that for us, go around, that's just an added piece to the.
Yeah, I like the, I think this is like right for conversation in terms of like our strategic planning and data producing too, so like continuing to come back to this. So my, I said, I think April Cal would be a good time to just have a high level conversation about. The cycles of your surveys and what we're doing, like, this is awesome, we do this, I know there's so many surveys that like. It would be in, it would be nice to see that timeline of like, here's where we're engaging and here's where staff has opportunity for engagement and feedback and. How you guys are going to utilize that data with our strategic planning goals.
Yeah.
You know, just to keep bringing that to the forefront, because that's why.
That is why we're.
Those are, exactly, those are two, two main, two of these students and people teaching.
Yep.
Um, thank you.
And really, I I just wanna reiterate that the work toward these two things was really led by the building guiding coalition. Like they they get the credit for leading that work, um, and they're doing amazing. Yes, nice.
Um, thank you, could you please convey our thanks and gratitude to them for the work that they're doing? I mean, that's really huge, and I love that we see positive trends in these charts, that's amazing. In particular, by the way, I feel like the Good Hope growth was amazing. Like that was a, or not Good Hope, Glen Hills, like that growth was amazing, it's G H with really.
Thank you, I'm very proud of it.
Yep.
Okay, I'm making progress.
I know, right?
Uh, before we move on to seven, does anybody wanna make a motion for just like a five-minute recess for someone? It is shaking the seven.
Well, you took your own.
I'll second it, uh, all in favor, aye, and any votes? We're gonna take a five-minute, we'll be back at seven thirty, a box of champagne.
I have to remind you.
Okay, thank you, we'll reconvene. I don't think I have any questions, reconvene. Um, moving on to board member reports, so donations, donors choose. I just wanted to provide an update on this because uh part of visitor participation at our last meeting. We had, I think, at least one constituent and member of the equity committee talk to us about, um. That there are teachers under the impression they cannot ask for donations, um, or tell. Like have Amazon wish lists that um families can utilize to support, you know, support teachers in their classrooms. Um, so Allison spoke with administrators and clarified that this is not a policy or practice that, um. So I believe you cleared up that, uh.
Yeah, actually, building principals found themselves to talk to staff.
Building leaders talked to staff to clarify, I wanted to clarify publicly, because it was asked about publicly, um, just that. The teachers are able to make their needs known and families are able to support their teachers in the classroom with. Anything they need, um, what is in public content is a crowdfunding policy. Which maybe is where some of the confusion stemmed from, um, we recently adopted this crowdfunding policy, I don't believe we had one before. Uh, which says that we actually do not condone crowdfunding, um, which actually happens though quite a lot in our district right now, I mean. As far as I, you know, so I guess, um, we did have a constituent reach out to express concern about this policy because it is utilized. Um, to send like, was it future cities, the team to, you know, it is utilized and our community wants to support. Our students and our extracurriculars and they often do that, sort of utilize some of these things. So I think it would make sense, I would propose that we sort of revisit it in a next round of policy, just it's. I think in my own head, it didn't seem, it seemed like a. Uh, not super impactful, you know, policy at the time, but knowing that it might be and especially in situation, um. Just knowing the situation of all public school funding, right, um, it makes sense to be able to wean on your community possibly or to to think about it, I guess. Um.
Well, what's the difference between this and a fundraiser?
Crowd crowdfunding in here would be like a, like a GoFundMe. I think this is sort of specifically maybe talking about. A GoFundMe situation versus like going to the brand and getting ten percent of.
I guess, well, it's, I mean, it was. I may have missed something, but it was, it was more like school supplies and. Again, like I, you know, you write something in your syllabus, like I I'm pretty sure the Lance District I worked at had this policy, but I was still able to put. Like tissue boxes and whatnot at the syllabus and like.
And that is.
I think you can, that's not about like crowdfunding, it's, it sounds to me like that's you're getting, you're asking for money, but to me.
Yes.
But like, to me, crowdfunding, yeah, okay, we probably shouldn't do it, but fundraising is different because it's district sanctioned.
Well, I just think this is worth a discussion at the board level, because now that it's been brought to our attention in this manner.
This is off for discussion.
This is, no, well, this is a current, it it was put there because we're talking about donations and donors choose, so yeah, I mean. It is, but I don't think this is, I don't know that everybody had an opportunity to think about it, the choice of like.
Everyone read it at home.
I think I would add that because we already have evidence, funded and consequences attached to adopting this, it would make sense to. Really take time to consider how to craft the language, because I think probably what happened is that that second paragraph that talks about individuals or. Organizations probably got extrapolated from the crowdfunding first paragraph. And then it was kind of accidentally interpreted to include like, hey, you can ask parents, right? I mean, I, it seems.
Right, right, there was possible misinterpretation of this policy, but I'd also like to just visit this policy.
Correct, I think that there's a lot of reasons for us to take it.
Though that, you know, just gives some historical perspective.
Yeah.
Some historical perspective, um, you know. We had an issue with fundraising that would be addressed sometime, though, I don't know, with what policy, frankly, to to see. And how we got to this, but when we uh were dealing with situations that there were tons of fundraisers. Uh, people announcing them in fact, including the woolly-nilly, there's a. Um, so what would happen is that there'd be lots of things, lots of places that would uh be sent out, so. If it might be unchecked organization, think that we didn't know, it might be financially benefiting in any way that in the district that wasn't aware of and so forth, so. You know, and and at some point, we did take a reason to kind of clarify that fundraising efforts have to be organized, at least. Building principles, uh, for pool, I don't know if we ever uh did, you know, formal policy just going back, it's, you know, uh, four or five years, at least. Uh, you know, we had a discussion, so there's benefit to having any kind of, uh. Fundraising activity approved and, you know, going through the, you know, the proper channel so that it's changing and that it's very questionable. Um, you know, one example might be, I don't know, the places that sell these not-bought nickel A sweaters and sweatshirts at Walgreens. In Milwaukee, I mean, you go to Milwaukee, see a rapper that says, you ever heard of that, the nickel A, they probably haven't heard of it, um, you know, I mean, you think. You know, you you don't know. Um, you know, I mean, you, you know, you you don't know who's doing what uh or why. So having, you know, uh, some of that fundraising be approved before it goes out to the public, that's one thing. Uh, as far as teachers, you know, being able to do classroom activities, I think teachers have to ask every time, you know, they want to collect, you know, tissues, right? But on the other hand, or on some kind of general understanding, the teachers can do that if that requires you about statements, something, handbook or policy, uh, you know, so even that's not fundraising necessarily either. And if you go to elementary school, right? People are constantly being asked not just to get supplies, but also to pull them. So those kids who buy the crayons, those kids who buy, you know, tissues, and kids buying, you know, hand sanitizer, that all gets even into a collective, which some people aren't anticipating either. So all this stuff, I mean, I just think it's a matter of having this uh statement that it's gotta get funded.
So would it, would there be consensus, sorry, there be consensus to, I would just say, bring this back to like, understand what are our current practices around fundraising? What, and we know that this is a current policy and any other policies either, like we might have some old policies right now still in a place around fundraising. So just to bring this back for discussion.
I would like to see something on fundraising. So I would, I would wanna differentiate crowdfunding and fundraising.
So we can reach out to Miola and see, because I guess I also just wanna understand, this is a new policy and so presumably, probably a lot of schools maybe adopt this. So I'd like to understand the reasoning or basis for this existence of a policy like this, like what am I not seeing? What I feel like.
Oh, I feel like I'm missing something else because yeah, I mean, fundraising looks like a lot of different things. I don't know why we wouldn't single out crowdfunding. I don't, I don't know if there are any legal barriers.
I don't know.
Crowdfunding and.
So what.
Which concept? So I think we need more information.
Continue this discussion later. Yeah, okay. Anything else? Anyone? Anyone? All right, let's move on to budget guiding principles resolution. And so Carla, you weren't able to talk about this, the um guiding principles that you drafted at our last meeting. So we've sort of brought it here. Do you wanna wanna say anything about it?
Didn't you guys discuss it at length already? Well, I think we should have guiding principles for budget work. And so I drafted some based on a lot of reading I did and thinking about the work that our district is doing and things that I believe are important to this board and board members. Um, as sort of a big picture document that we can look to as we provide oversight of budget work in this particular year, recognizing this is happening on the fly. In my mind, I was thinking this would be a resolution which could then be revisited as we learn and grow in our budget work and perhaps turned into some sort of meaningful policy development in the next year as we look forward and try to put in place um you know, better practices for board and community participation in the budget process. But for now, this is what I proposed that uh we consider adopting. Um, the one item that got a lot of feedback from staff was number five. Require that all recommendations to the board be supported by objective standards, data and benchmarks when available to assess the educational impact of budget adjustments. I saw a number of comments from staff who wondered if this meant looking at teacher performance, student achievement in their classrooms. Um, from my perspective, I was looking at this from a board satellite view, like an institutional view, the educational impact, say, of the existence or non-existence of a position, not a person, say, right? So data and benchmarks would be, I don't know, Ben, Hattie and things like that, you know, objective standards and information and data and expertise that's out there about what our institution should look like. Um, but anyway, that's why I put this together to help guide our work.
Thank you. Thank you for putting it together, Carl, first of all. You are welcome. Um.
Yeah, I like, I like number five. Uh, I think that's good. The only thing I would say, and I don't know, maybe we don't need it. Just, I I don't know. You've, in the, in number one, you say transparent. And if you look at what we did for the, when we were talking about budgets, so item uh three D or whatnot, it says, and I'm making sure it's public, yes, public.
The guiding principle.
The guiding principle, it says, performance of employees based on performance. Like, there are some things we can't be transparent about. So I I don't know if we wanna say something like be as transparent as possible or whatnot, but that there are some things where I we're just not gonna be able to be totally.
I I tend to, uh, I'd like to echo that comment that, I mean, first of all, it it's great. I I think you'll take care of it, I think. Go say. Uh, you know, sometimes, oh, yes, I wonder, you know, if there's a fundamental disagreement of policy and there's a, it's a fundamental disagreement on policy and be two different opinions to guide us. I mean, is that not objective? Because someone believing something versus another. I don't think that necessarily is, but I mean, I just kind of wanna elaborate on my sense of this, which is it's a guiding document, but on the other hand, it's not absolutely documented. I don't think intended to have some say, but you didn't do this when you made that decision, so now you have to redo it. Um, I think because I don't think that we want to, you know, create a sense that someone can challenge something because they might, you know, either a, he may, how we say here, from someone's perspective, be, you can have a different, you know, perspective. That's, that's my only comment to it. I don't know that it requires any change, though, uh, because I think, again, it was a lot of work, it really captured what we're trying to do. I think that uh it does express to the public and to the staff in particular what are the guiding principles they're going to be and it should still some confidence that we're maybe uh trying to, you know, adhere to the standard. So I think it's good for both of us. And I mean, is it separate, don't discussion or like?
Yeah, it should have been action, but we can, uh, I think, yeah, the the point of this document and it was like, as sort of I laid it out last meeting was just this is to get noticed to our community, our staff, administration, our, you know, financial consultants, et cetera. It's like, when these recommendations come to us, this is the high, this is the line, it's we're taking, this is gonna be, we're taking, we're gonna look at the recommendations that are being made. Um, and I think to your point, Andy, they're guiding principles, so when people can say, you know, it's a policy or not, it's not, but it says, within available resources, we will, like, again, we strive, we strive to drive, you know, like, we're trying, we're trying. Um, and this is like a guiding vision for us as a board that we're not gonna get behind. I have like, uh, just a couple, I would say, proposed edits because I'm keeping in mind um what our staff was saying just earlier about how we are talking about the budget surprise budget. You know, the budget challenges that we face because we are a public school and that for any other reason, right? And so I would propose that you take out the first sentence. I would propose you take out the, uh, I think you could start with, we will be guided in making budget decisions by our vision. I would take out potentially difficult. Um, and there was, and and I I do that because this is not, we're not creating the guiding principles because we should have these in place as.
It's not a one off.
It's not gonna be a one off and they can change and grow, but it's not, it's sort of in response to what happened, but I don't want it to live on as a document that is like reactive. I want it to be. So that, so those would be my suggestions. And then one, there was also um a comment, one of the staff comments around five was when available to cut when available. Like, we should always be sort of using objective standards, data benchmark. Again, it's like, so then available within available resources is like, do we, you know, do we have the resources to look at data, et cetera? But I think we should make, that should maybe always be our that should be what grounds us. Those are my suggestions.
So real quick, uh, and again, I I know we're not saying we're gonna deviate or or whatnot, but if we pass this, we we should hold ourselves to the standard. Uh, and I understand there might be adjustments along, but like, if we pass this, we hold ourselves to the standard. And we should, but I'm I'm kind of hearing like, well, you know, is we're not held to this or whatnot.
No, but it's perfect.
I am total, I I know, I, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying we are perfect, but I am saying that if we pass this, we need to hold ourselves to the standard. And that means that someone can come to us and say, you are not objective about this. And this is my evidence.
Well, it doesn't mean that we won't, sorry.
Well, it doesn't mean we won't, what?
People can disagree about.
Yes, people.
Standards and data. We, I, as a person who receives information and data, I'm going to adhere, you know, like, we were also all elected to be here and to represent our community. So it's not just my opinion, it's not just their opinion, it's, we hear everyone's opinion. We look at the data that we have to perceive from our own perspectives, our own bias, our own lenses, and then do what we are supposed, you know, do what we can with that. So you're never gonna provide for a space where people aren't gonna disagree about like data and. Well, you're saying like, I I think what I hear you saying is objective standards and people come and say, you're not using objective.
Well, then we need to.
Disagree on what those are.
Then we need to be able to tell them, well, no, we did use objective standards. Here's what we did as transparently as possible.
Exactly. I to- so I totally agree with that. And when the recommendations come to us, these are the questions you guys are gonna be prepared to, these are the principles. We're gonna say, hey, what, where's the objective data? Walk us through the equity events, you know, like all of these things. How did you engage staff? How did you engage families? And again, we know this is a tight timeline, right? So like, why this is a guiding principle is like, it won't be perfect this endeavor, that they can grow and evolve, but this is the standard we wanna hold ourselves to.
Good, I agree.
Thank you. I agree too.
And Ben, you wanted to say collaborative and accountable with as much transparency as possible. Or as.
That's fine. That's possible. It's what I wanted to add.
I I actually would argue that maybe equally allowed would be appropriate because I think transparency as possible sounds somewhat subjective, integral, like, in terms of symptoms.
Thank you. I'm editing in real time.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we make those edits? And if there are any more, would we bring it back to approve?
Sure.
At the board meeting. Good work, guys. Um, okay. Uh, it is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. There is a resolution and recognition of developmental disabilities awareness month. Um, Governor Tony Evers has made a proclamation recognizing it. Um, hopefully you had a chance to to look at it. Um, obviously, this one it's supposed to honor me and a lot of people in our district, um, our students. And uh, there is a motion to recognize this month.
Okay, I move to recognize the disability.
Well, the.
I hope to approve the resolution for recognition of developmental disabilities awareness month.
I will second that motion.
Um, any discussion? I'll just, can I just read like a period, like a uh the resolve or something, just so we. Is that okay? Can I just read this video? Okay, thanks. Um, so whereas research has shown that students with disabilities experience greater academic and social challenges than non-disabled students, and whereas Glendale River Hills School District finds that in order to ensure the full inclusion of all people into society, there is a need to increase public awareness of the history of disabilities and the disability rights movement. Uh, whereas the Glendale River Hills District finds that instruction on disability history and people with disabilities and the disability rights movement will increase respect for and acceptance of people with disabilities, including people living with developmental disabilities. And then it goes on to be resolved that we recognize this month as developmental disabilities awareness month and hereby encourage our schools to provide instruction of disability history, people with disabilities and the disability rights movement. Uh, all in favor of approving this resolution? I?
I.
I.
Any opposed?
Can can I make one more comment?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, I should have done it before, right? And uh, I'm really happy about this resolution. I think you wrote it right then. Yeah, thank you so much. And I would just like to add that a couple of years ago, because you know, I've been engaged in disability advocacy for many, many years. I had a passing conversation with Jenica about a unit she was doing on social justice and civil rights. And we had this beautiful conversation where I was like, hey, you know who the forgotten people are of the sixties disability rights movement? The people who didn't get their anti-discrimination law until nineteen ninety something while everyone marched forward. It was the people with disabilities. And so we had this deep dive together where we explored um resources and learning around um disability rights history, which she dove into and I believe rolled out into some classrooms and developed some curriculum around that. You would know better than, but we did that work. And so it's really, it's already happening in our district. I love it. And thank you for this opportunity.
The resolution. Can we put it on our website?
Yeah, are you gonna sign it tonight or should I do a docu-sign?
Uh, I can sign it tonight. It has all together. Yeah, she's on it. I'll sign it. Um, so much, okay. Okay, what else? Where are we?
Get it, sorry.
Uh, oh, true. All right, future agenda topics and or meeting dates.
Yes, I have a future meeting topic. I would like to, I said, I said this last time, I think, I would like to talk about uh one eighteen point two four, section one of state statutes, and it talks about administrative contract links. Uh, where it says it may be no more than two years, and I think we should have our own policy where we at least consider uh having it the same as teacher contracts, such as one.
Uh, March board meeting, give me the agenda. I don't know.
Thank you.
Um, we also need to schedule a meeting, special meeting. Uh, yep, next week. Do you have uh guesses? Okay, is it Matt's response? Can we do a doodle, I guess, or get his availability?
Yep.
And then see if we can match that. I also wonder if at that meeting it might make sense to have uh my character house talk about it. Uh, and that's all for good health.
Which I, so he's, he's willing to come talk to us about that.
Uh, is there anything else?
Back next Thursday is the Nicole A Music Department joint music concert.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
impacted by that, but I.
Park the music program is next Thursday. And we have an equity committee meeting, I would say, but they could go before or after. Just wanted to. Only half that. Um, and that should be a person. Okay. Any other um things we need to? Okay. Uh, board meeting debrief before we move into closed session.
Fine, so I feel bad talking about consultants, but um I I like the person. I don't, I I think these schools spend as much money on consultants.
That's your deeper, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
This was a longer meeting, but I think we got a lot of ground covered. I think I saw a lot of evidence of engagement and collaboration with our teams, our staff especially, and um I really especially wanna name the teachers for just reminding us uh why we're here, what we're doing, right? And getting us back on that trip. I wish. Anyone else?
Yes. Um, one of the things I think is really valuable for us as a whole is if there is feedback, then from administration or teachers, things that can help us help inform our decision-making, it it matters a lot. Like, we want to make sure that we're not making these decisions and avoid or accidentally going in a direction that that isn't gonna be well received, that isn't the intended direction. So if there is a way for those types of data to be shared with us ahead of time for consideration, that's super helpful. Um, and then recommendations are also really helpful, but like with proposals for my part, it would be great if we could have the total data for consideration. So like, if one package is gonna be seven thousand, it's gonna be something, and then another package is gonna be something. We could just like have a quick summary of like, hey, there's this and hey, there's this, and these are the pieces that we think are valuable for each thing that we should weigh. A quick summary like that would really make a big difference, I think, in how we can have effective conversations. But I appreciate that people have been so open about answering questions, feeling like they're put on the spot, but in reality, we just super, super appreciate your input because I mean, we're here to serve you guys and the community, right?
Yeah, all right, so social session. Yeah, is there, you know, full statement of emotion?
I move to convening the closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data. Of any public employee for which the governmental body in this jurisdiction or exercise responsibilities specifically to discuss employer engagement.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that'd be.
Roll call, sorry, correct. Karen Cromwell?
Hi.
Andrew. Ben Lynn?
Aye.
Moon Garland.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for being here.